It will be uploaded to the website. And it will be under Board of Ed hearings.
Okay, all right. So we will get started. Just please, everyone, remember to mute your phones. And I'd like to then move over and complete the Pledge of Allegiance. So if we could all stand to complete the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, so I'll just read the following statement to present the items that we'll be discussing tonight is to present and discuss the Regional School District, Region 8 proposed budget for 2020-2021, to present and discuss the Regional School District Number 8 proposed capital budget for 2021, and to present and discuss the allocation of surplus funds from 2018 to 2019 for the Regional School District 8. So Pat, I will turn it over to you for you to present your presentation.
And thank you very much. Just to let you know, Dave did just join the meeting.
Okay.
So right now, I'm going to share my screen so that everyone can see the presentation. And then afterwards, will be an opportunity for public comment. So. Hopefully, at this point, we can see the screen and the presentation. And so this is the presentation of the Region 8 2020-21 budget for the public hearing. And just as a reminder, anytime we have any type of a decision that we make as a district, we make it in accordance with our district's strategic plan, vision, mission, and goals. And this is going to be fun as I'm also admitting people to the meeting. So as you take a look at our vision and our mission, we talk a lot about college and career readiness. We talk about wanting to make sure that our students have the experiences both academically and extracurricularly to make sure that they can develop as critical thinkers and problem solvers and informed citizens. So what you see within our budget are areas that would help to allow the district to meet our vision, mission, and theory of action. Our commitments that we have as a district are to have a financially efficient and accountable budget, to have a warm and welcoming district, to make sure that what our students have is a world-class education that meets the needs of all students, that we hire and train our professional staff and retain them so that they are part of our community for years and become an important part of our students' lives, and that we also engage the community as we have tonight throughout our outreach and communicating and engaging you, not just in the budget, but also in all the activities and other opportunities the district has to offer. Our strategic plan has five goals. And within those five goals, we really focus on the academics, the school climate, making sure that we're addressing declining enrollment as that occurs, making sure that our facilities are safe and accepting, and not just safe when you talk about security-wise, but safe for learning. That emotional safety is incredibly important as well within a safe and learning environment for students. And that we have a facility that has all the needs for learning available to our students, whether that's in the classroom, through technology, through our stage and our performing arts, through our athletics. So given all of that, before we get into the nuts and bolts of the budget, I think it's important that we recognize that we have a district that has presented itself with a strong amount of return on investment for the three communities. When you take a look at even the few accolades that we have as a district, both academically, within the performing arts, within the athletics, our students are achieving at high levels, and that's because of the investment that is put into our schools each and every year. And because of the incredibly dedicated staff and administration and faculty that we have as the district, the coaches, the extracurricular teachers that stay after school for our clubs and engage our students, all of our students are benefiting. And as you can see from the different accolades here, we are doing well, and we want to continue to do well for our students and our community. So when you take a look at some of the changes and improvements that we are presenting in the budget, we are taking a look at adding additional career and technical education classes. We know that that is an area of growth in the state and their interest for many of our students. So we want to make sure that we are adding more of those courses, and several of the courses we are adding actually provide students with an opportunity to graduate with a certification or college credit that can help them advance upon graduation. We are continuing our Woods program, but looking at student enrollment needs right now. We have reduced that to a .5 Woods teacher based on those enrollment needs, but we do continue that program for our students. We're also adding some additional academic classes, an AP Capstone class. That's part one of a two-year class where students learn to hone their research skills and then actually to do research-based projects that end up with them presenting their research in the end, as well as an SAAT math support class. We have some additional extracurricular clubs and stipends that we are adding to, again, support the interests of our students, not just during the academic day, but after school. We are looking at helping to provide oversight and to support the the social-emotional needs and the supervisory needs of our students at the middle school by adding a hall monitor that would actually also help with our monitoring of our very popular chorus class that has close to 100 students in it, helping to monitor bathrooms and hallways during the day. So again, the middle school doesn't have any hallway monitors to this point, so what we're looking to do is to add one. The high school has three right now, but the way that they are used at the high school does not make it possible for us to utilize any of them at the middle school. Our technology service technician that we are looking to add is really part of the revamping of the technology department that started two years ago with a Director of Technology and Communication, and then a data specialist, and then a service technician. What we have found with the increasing use and utilization of technologies throughout the learning classrooms, as well as just within the administrative part of the district, is that we really need somebody that can help to provide additional technical support for students and staff, and adding this .5 technician would help us to best meet those needs. Speaking of needs and speaking the needs of our students, we know that mental health needs continue to grow for our students, and the mental health needs for groups, for counseling, as well as for actual oversight of PPTs and 504s and the testing that goes along with that have caused us to need to add a .6 school psychologist to meet all of the mental health needs of our students within the district that we are aware of and those that continue to happen over time.
Pat, can I interrupt? Can I interrupt you for one minute? There are two folks that I'm seeing ending in phone number 33 and then 70. Both of those numbers, Pat, maybe you could just mute them.
I can mute them, yep.
That would be appreciated, because I feel like the audio problems are coming from folks not being muted.
Yep, I will.
And I'm no expert. I'm just trying to get to the bottom of it. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So continuing back, the high school nurse administrative assistant hours were reduced this year based on a request from the nurse. We have found that the reduction was a little bit too much, and we need to add back hours a day, so we are looking to add that back. And overall, because of the changes in programming needs of our students in special education, we are able to reduce five paraprofessionals in the budget for next year. Other information to consider and to be aware of is we do have declining enrollment, and in the budget book, it's important to note that we need to utilize sources of information when we talk about our enrollment numbers. We use a company called Nezdeck who does projections for both ourselves and for the elementary schools, and the Nezdeck projections are in the budget book on page 11. We also have on page 12 in our budget book, we have the actual information that is compared to what Nezdeck predicts. And as you can see, what you can see over time is that the Nezdeck predictions are anywhere, they're correct some of the time, but they can be off from as much as 27 to 10 to two students. And so it is really hard to utilize only the Nezdeck predictions as part of our part of our declining enrollment numbers. What you see on the screen are the projections from Nezdeck. However, what we are seeing from the elementary numbers coming in, as well as from the the number of students that are changing their minds about going to magnet schools, is those numbers for declining enrollment might not be exactly right from Nezdeck, so we are using them cautiously. One of the other things you will notice on page 12 in the budget book is that our free and reduced lunch numbers continue to grow and increase, and those needs are continuing to show in our district now, and I think even as we continue through the pandemic issues that we are having, those numbers could continue to grow. Our health insurance is currently budgeted at 3.3%. That is a decline from the last presentation that you might have heard of 5.8%. The decline came from the renegotiation with Anthem for our administrative fees, service fees per head, as well as our 12-month rolling claims numbers being very steady. So we just had a meeting this past week with the Insurance Consortium, and the new projection was to reduce to a 3.3% increase. We continue to also look for areas within technology where we need to continue to grow for our instruction. We need to make sure that we have stability in how we are funding, and we are also looking at enhancing security for a technology. As we utilize technology more, we need to make sure that it is also secure for our students and our staff to be using that. We are heading into year two of our bus contract, and we are reducing in the budget, three buses, one from each town. We still have costs for athletics, field trips, and special education that are remaining as budgeted within the budget, but we were able to, when working with Daco, reduce three buses by really reviewing our bus stops and how we are labeling different types of streets and being able to condense some of the bus stops. One of the things that we are hoping to address this summer is the DOT project, and we do not have a contingency built in for that project. And as you know, anyone who's done any type of a project at home, the project you think is going to cost you $100 ends up costing you $200 because of unforeseen issues. We know with this project that there could be unforeseen issues, so we do know we need to find a place to budget for our DOT contingency. We have general contract increases in the budget, and we do have capital budget needs within the district. One of the questions that has come up several times in different meetings and in public comments was about the idea of looking at your enrollment numbers more closely, and can't we reduce more teachers? And what I'm trying to demonstrate in this slide and the next couple of slides are what the numbers are looking like right now for our projections for next year. And that when you take a look at the number of students that we need to program for in 7th and 8th grade, which is what you're seeing here, there's no room for us to, at this point, collapse an entire team and move those students into another team. The numbers are too high at this point, so we still do not have that flexibility right now at the middle school. And when you talk about the high school, the high school is a totally different beast when you come, when it comes to the scheduling of students in high school. That we are required by law to have students have 25 credits when they graduate from high school. They are very prescriptive in what they have to have those credits in. And that has changed, starting this year's freshman class actually has been the change, where it actually now includes world language and increased PE credits. So when you take a look at how many credits a student needs to take a year in order to keep on track for graduating, plus all of the different requirements for classes, the needs for us to have multiple levels of classes to meet different students' needs, as well as ways to be able to provide for interventions and electives, this process takes months to be able to do and is not a simple process. We have to wait for hearing from students and their enrollment requests and looking at what they're asking to take for classes as well. Right now, this is a picture of where that process is. And as you can see, for example, when you take a look at Essentials of Pre-Algebra for the math classes, we have 27 students requesting that class. That will be broken into two different sections. When you talk about Essentials of Algebra with 25 students, we would break that into two sections, and these are these are numbers then that have to get broken down into numbers of sections for numbers of teaching units, and within an eight-period day, students be able to provide the all the courses they need for the credits that are required. Again, these numbers right now do not allow us to be able to reduce the number of FTEs that we have within the district. So when it comes to the budget, right now, with the different information that I've just shared with you, we are proposing for an overall budget of $30,809,327, which is an increase of $313,411. That is the overall budget summary. That is where we are talking about our gross budget number. However, what you can see on the screen here, and to be very clear, that gross budget number is here. That's the number I was just talking about. We take our gross budget number, which is everything that is in the budget book, and we know that we have some revenues that come in for the district. We have an excess cost special education placement grant. We do have some instrument rentals and other things that you can see here. We have a proposed amount of revenue that we believe we are going to receive, wait, this is what we anticipate, of $813,000. You subtract that $813,000 from the $30,809, and you come up with $29,995,552. That is a $360,000 increase from this current school year, or a 1.22% increase. That $29,995,552 is what the final budget number would be, and what you can see below that is how that would break out for each of the three towns in the levy. When it comes to capital budgets, because we bifurcate our budget, we have both an operating and a capital budget. The operating budget I just explained, the capital budget is listed here with a variety of projects that are required or things that we really feel we need to be addressing on the campus, and that is a total of $448,232. We are looking at completing the EFIS work in the district for $10,000, which would then allow us to wait another 20 years to really redo any of the EFIS project that needs to get done. The stair treads have been done at the high school, but the ramps have not been done, so the ramps are in here for $15,800. Those go down into the high school cafeteria and have places where they are lifting in are not safe. There are areas for carpet that you can see that are listed where we have moisture issues in rooms, and we need to pull up the carpet, remediate the moisture, and replace the flooring. The sidewalks continue to have issues across campus. The new chairs and tables in the media center are probably one of the most important educational purchases we have in the capital budget. The new chairs and tables are needed because when we redid the flooring in the media center and we redesigned the media center last year, we had to get rid of a variety of furniture pieces that no longer would fit or work in there. Therefore, at this point, we do not actually have enough seating capacity for all of our classes and our students to utilize the media center at the high school. So it is truly a very focused educational need that we have to replace tables and chairs in the media center so our students, teachers, and classes can utilize that space effectively. This is the second-to-last year of the lease on the dump truck, which is in there for $14,870. We have an issue with needing to upgrade our mower for the field areas on campus. The gym floors in both the middle school and the high school have buckling wood on them that is causing it to be uneven surfaces for playing, and by being able to drum sand that down and remove the bumps and address the spacing issues between the boards of the flooring, it would address that issue, so that is why we are looking to redo both of the gym floors. We are needing year two of the camera upgrade for the security camera in the district. The gates for the middle school and high school would provide us an opportunity to stop the wandering in the building that happens in the off-hours when different events are renting the building. The landscape architecture to redesign the front entrance to both the middle school and the high school is necessary to help us to address the access security-wise to both buildings, as well as some of the drainage issues in those areas. This number is simply to get plans for how we could address that. It is not to do any of the work. We have a variety of irregularities and depressions and issues out in the outfield of the high school baseball field that we've had several companies look at and say the best way to deal with that is to remove the entire outfield and start over again. And then in order to make sure that we have an ongoing plan moving forward for our overall athletic facilities improvement, we are looking to engage an engineering firm to provide us with a five- or 10-year plan for all of our athletic facilities as to how and when they should be improved and what those improvements should be and what they would cost, so we actually would have then a plan moving forward. So given that capital budget, you have the proposed numbers here of $448,232 and how they would be breaking out for the three towns in the levy. So when you pull together both the capital and the operating budget, that is a total number of $30,443,782, or an increase of $291,980, or a .97% increase. Not included in any of those numbers is the $106,920.84 in off-budget offset from the 1819 budget surplus that will be offsetting the levies for the three towns based on the rule that we can only roll 1% over at the end of the year, and that $106,000 is the overage above and beyond the 1% that the board would be rolling over. When it comes to the DOT project, I have been in touch quite a bit this morning and this afternoon with Andy Tierney as we have been dealing with some funding questions around how to fund the DOT project based on where the numbers currently are for the project. The project was grant-funded, and the grant funding that came from the state was for two projects, the RAM project, and there is a Hebron project in there as well that deals with the intersection in Hebron. And the funding for both of those through this, what's called a PAL agreement, has, is $102,867.08 short for the DOT project on the RAM campus. So given that, the DOT will not finalize the agreement for us to move forward with the project this summer until we can explain to DOT how we are going to pay for $102,000 that is an overage at this point. In talking with Andy Tierney today and looking at the variety of options that we might have as a district to address that, my suggestion is that that comes from the additional surplus that the district has from the 1819 budget. The other issue that we have is that the proposal that came forward to do the project does not have any contingency built in it, and as I stated earlier, we know that projects, when they happen, there's things that are going to happen that require contingency. Therefore, when we take a look at the $304,959.16, that is in surplus funds available for the RAM budget from 1819, my suggestion is that the board make a decision around paying for the overage from those monies, as well as $100,000 in contingency, and then there's still $102,092 left to possibly put toward the budget offset for the 2021 for the three towns. Again, those are my ideas and not something that the board has discussed at this point, because this is brand-new information that has happened today and will be discussed further when the board moves into the board meeting later this evening. With that, I am done with my presentation. I'm happy to turn that over to public comment.
Yeah, so how we're going to work public comment is if someone wants to make a public comment, starting now, if you could type your name into the chat screen, and I will call out your name, and then you can make your public comment. I do appreciate everyone's comments in the chat, but I would appreciate that if you want your comments heard, that you type your name. I'll call out your name, and then you can make any comments that way. So we'll start that way. So if everyone could stay on mute until I call your name, that would be great, yes. And there's a three-minute limit, so who wants to be, Vinny, can I tag you with doing the three minutes? So why don't we start with you, Amy, first? You were the first one to type your name. So Amy, would you mind stating your name, the town, and your comment? Thank you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name's Amy Tomadio, and I'm from Hebron, and I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank everybody who's on the board who has donated a lot of time and energy in negotiating this budget. As always, Pat, you have done an amazing job presenting this in a manner that is organized and transparent. I appreciate that. There are a lot of conversations I know that happen and how people, how you guys have come to the decision that you have. I'm just, I would like just to say that there are a few things that I had questions about or concerns about. And first and foremost, it is the pay-to-play. And I am not in agreement with the decision that was made to eliminate that. That's been a conversation that's been ongoing for years. I think that the idea that it's double taxing people is flawed in that it is part of our society at this point in time that we don't expect the general population to pay for the things that we do that are above and beyond. For example, the rec departments. Rec departments, we pay taxes for. We all pay taxes for the rec department, whether or not we use the facilities or the programming. If there's something special that we would like to do, we have to pay. Like, we have to pay for ballet lessons if we want to take them. We have to pay for yoga or whatever it is, because that's not expected that everybody would have to pay for that. So the expectation that people have, that the general population has to pay for the extra of the extracurricular is my concern. I would, I would think that the question would be to ask the district or Pat if we are budgeting sufficient number of dollars to cover the people that aren't able to pay, that are having a hardship, because there is, there are scholarships available for people who don't, who can't afford it. So that's my suggestion, that that be put in so that not everybody has to pay the, or absorb the $164,000 that we are just doing away with. The second thing I wanted to mention was the bus contract. The second thing I wanted to mention was the bus contract. I'm not sure, I mean, I'm not sure if this was a district recommendation, but there's a lot that goes into bus transportation, especially with kids not being able to be on the bus for an hour, more than an hour. I just, I see this as being very short sighted. I think it was last year, maybe a year and a half ago when we were getting calls from a parent about the fact that their kids were on the bus too long. And I believe they lived in Marlboro and they were very upset because their kid, another kid was dropped off a mile away from the house. And none of these streets have sidewalks, but it was because the bus didn't go to their house. So those are concerns that I have. I also have a concern with the Chartwell contract not being, going out to bid, that that could have created additional savings for us that, that the board kind of got in the middle of that, a contract kind of thing. I mean, it just seems like maybe people were acting out of their, the purview, but that's your thing. So that's it for me. Thank you so much and take care.
Thank you, Amy. All right, if you could put yourself back on mute, that would be great, Amy. And is there anybody else that wants to make a public comment? If you could type your name in the chat screen?
I don't know how to mute myself.
Susan, oh, stop, what, Pat, what was the mute? Star six, Pat? If you click on the screen where your picture is, I believe there's a bar that comes up at the bottom and you can hit mute at the bottom too. I don't know if you see that. All right, so Susan Lesser, why don't we, or wait, let me, I think Ken was first, right? Ken, why don't you, Ken from Marlboro, would you like to speak? All right, we'll skip over Ken, we'll Susan Lesser? Susan Lesser? Can someone just confirm they hear me?
I can hear you, Sue.
I can hear you.
Very good. So Susan, if you're having trouble getting off of mute, can you let us know and we can unmute you?
Yeah, I think Pat might have to let people speak. She might have muted everybody.
You need to unmute the individuals. Okay, so why don't you, Pat, unmute Ken first, please?
I cannot unmute anyone. Once they're muted, they can only unmute themselves.
That's what I figured. If they, if they click on the screen at the bottom of the screen.
What they need to do is you need, anybody who's muted and wants to talk on the computer, you need to just take your cursor and roll it over your, roll it over the screen and you'll see on the bottom of your screen a little microphone, a telephone and a camera show up. You need to click on the microphone. Susan's muted, yay.
All right, sorry about that. I just wanted to say I agree with everything that Amy said as far as the pay to play, so I'm not going to bother going into that. I'm a little confused on why RAM has to set up the contingency and the inspection for the DOT project when Hebron is getting the grant money. So that confuses me a little bit. The other thing is, I just want to remind everybody that your budget was created. Can everybody hear me? I'm getting a lot of feedback.
Yeah, if, Ken, if you could mute yourself until Susan's ready or Susan's done, that would be better.
Okay, um, the budget was created in February and this was before the pandemic and it was a very healthy economy. And so I think under those circumstances, your budget was reasonable. But now we're in a very uncertain situation. People are losing their jobs, people are losing their businesses and we're very possibly facing a global economic collapse. And so in light of all of that, I think that you should probably not be adding programs at this time. I think we should all be tightening our belts and trying to find ways to save money. And for example, I noticed that you have $150,000 for the baseball field. I think you should maybe look at, well, is there any way you can get by without doing that this year until we find out what's going to happen with the economy? Because we don't know and right now it's looking pretty bad, especially since we don't know when people are going to be able to get back out into their businesses, what businesses will survive. So I, I just really wish that you would consider the situation that many, many people are facing. I'm also kind of surprised too that when you first put out your budget, there only 150,000 was being used for the DOT project and now most of it is being used for the DOT project. So I think that's something that I would like to get some more answers on myself. And so just as chairman of the Board of Finance, I would like to ask all of you, please, please, do everything you can to lower the, the cost of your budget because people are, a lot of people are hurting and I think that it's the responsible thing to do for all of us to work together to try to help each other. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, why don't we move to Ken? If you can unmute yourself in, I was given a little tip too. You could also unmute yourself by hitting Ctrl D on your PC as well if you can't find the mute button when you click on the screen. So Ken, why don't we turn it over to you? And Susan, would you mind putting yourself back on mute?
Okay, can you hear me at this point?
Yes, I can, Ken.
Okay, so I'm just going to reiterate, I think the concern that we've expressed at the Marlboro Board, although I'm not speaking for the board, but as a member, when I was on the board, we did discuss the pay for play, the concerns about, we felt that in general, we felt that should be reinstated. Maximum use of the surplus to help offset the cost for next year's budget. And I think we do need to take into account the fact now that per the governor's executive order, the public can no longer vote on these budgets, both RAM and even our local town budgets. And we really need the Board of Ed to take that into consideration and absolutely minimize the impact on the town taxpayers in all three towns because we no longer have, the taxpayers no longer have a voice. You are our voice, so it's up to you to do the best you can to give us the leanest budget possible.
Thank you, Ken. And Pat, I want to circle back, I apologize. Susan did ask a question about the DOT project and would, would you mind just answering, if you have an answer to Susan's question? Would you mind answering her question?
So I can answer it as best I can and I know Andy Tierney is also on the phone, is on the meeting. So when, when the grant money was provided by the state several years ago, it was provided for two projects, for the DOT project and for the Hebron intersection project. And I'm not, it wasn't part of that process. I'm not sure why, whatever number was provided to them, was provided to them, but the grant was for $1.3 million to include both the projects. As we are looking at the numbers that have come through for the DOT project, we have our engineering firm that is being paid for out of that plus what their engineering firm's original amount of money was has increased because of extra work that has been asked of them to do throughout this process. And then there was money in there for construction and money in there for inspections for the, for the RAM project. The amount of money that we've received from the state, which was incredibly generous and wonderful, is just not enough to be able to cover what the, what the cost of the engineering firm and the project are coming in at now today. And so because of that, there is a shortfall in that process. And although this type of a grant, the PAL grant, can only be given to a municipality, it cannot be given to a school district or a regional school district. So the reason why the money is filtering through Hebron is because that's the type of grant and that's how it was written and that's where the money has to be filtered through. When we have some of these overages, for example, RAM has already had to pay some additional $5,000 in monies for consulting work that happened outside of the grant for this. We've already had to pay for that. That's been done this past year. So those things happen and so we have that responsibility in order to complete this project that, that money doesn't exist anywhere else, but as yet, given all the numbers that we have in current time, that is what we're going to need to, to have to cover.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Pat. Hopefully Susan, that answers your question. So moving along, the next person, Vinny, did you have something to say?
Yes, can you hear me, Sue?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Okay. I just want to let the, the boards know in the various towns that, you know, we do go and listen and I did listen to many of the meetings, so we are attentive to what you are saying. I was a little bit disheartened. I, you know, one of the, one of the Marlboro Board members had said, stated to, that they were in corporate and go to zero on the budget and deal with it, at which point the chairwoman laughed. I don't think any of this is funny and I think we need to be more professional. I think we could do a better job looking for areas to save and doing more research on that. My share, my family's share of the expenses and the fees, including pay to play and parking in 2000, from 2017 to 2018 went up 64% and that was with the same number of kids. It was $610 from 370. My car taxes for three cars for the year are $612. When you factor in the fees for class dues, I'm paying $810 for two kids per year times four years. It's a lot of money. And when you talk about shared sacrifice, you know, where's, where's the help, you know, where's the help for the families that are working to provide for their kids and provide for a good education? In terms of the numbers for the NASDAQ, if you want to look at declining enrollment, our projected NASDAQ numbers from 2018 going into 2019 were 1373. Our actual numbers as of 10/1/19 were 1455. So again, you know, you can't put a lot of stock in the NASDAQ projections. I also heard in the Marlboro meeting about an increase in the kindergarten class coming in. I also heard about contractual obligations that were as part of the, the local school board as well as increases in, in medical costs. Does RAM not have those? RAM has them too. And, you know, we're going to work hard to get to a zero budget and I think we're probably going to get there tonight. So I hope the Boards of Finance are, are going to get there as well. I know Andover was, was pretty much there. But in terms of the numbers from the levy, Marlboro's plus one student from last year. Andover's plus 12 students from last year changed, increased, which is about 5%, which if we go to a zero budget, will probably be about the difference in their, in their RAM budgeting. When Hebron was carrying the lion's share, you know, we had a lot, we had a lot of the levy. So nobody really felt bad for us. And, and again, when it comes to fixed income, you know, a lot of us, a lot of the working families have lost jobs or their business has been closed. The fixed income people are still getting the fixed income and they've also gotten a $1,200 stimulus check per person. So I would just ask that you take that into account as well. And in terms of the revenue to the budget, you can't really take out the 164 because that wasn't what we were going to get in for next year. It was only going to be about 140. And when you look at the bottom line revenue, it's a difference, it's only a difference of 47,000. So if you take the 140 into account, we're only a difference of 27,000. Because again, we've, we've done a good job bringing in more revenue to the district. We've increased those numbers. So there's got to be other ways. You got to look outside the box and, and again, let's, you know, let's help everybody out. Let's give everybody some relief. And we're not talking about relieving all the fees. We're just talking about relieving some of the ones that have been paying the lion's share over the last couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Dieter Zimmer? You hit Ctrl D on your computer, you can unmute yourself. Dieter? All right, we'll, we'll move over to someone else and go back to you, Dieter. So Dan Larson?
Good day. A couple of questions. Who lays out the bus routes? Is that the school? Hold on, is that the school or is that the school or the bus companies themselves? That was one. My other thing was the pay to play. Again, at this point in time, I would suggest that that be reinstated. And then my last comment would be the CIP projects. I do not see where they are categorized into different priorities. You know, a lot of times you will have them as different priorities. So as you go through negotiations, you would consider, you know, the top tier and, and, you know, consider going down as you try to come up with, with a number that you feel would be more plausible to the taxpayers. So these are just some questions that I would ask and wait for comments. Thank you.
Okay. Pat, do you want to answer the question on the bus routes?
Absolutely. DABCO does the bus routes. So the bus company does the bus routes, not the district. As far as the CIP projects go, if you do look at our budget book, which is on page 34 of the budget book, there is a breakout of the, actually it's pages 33 and 34, there's a breakout of the, all of the projects that were considered for this year. And when we talk about our CIP projects annually, we do prioritize them and what you will see is that on page 34, there were actually $665,988 worth of unfunded projects for this year that we prioritized out of the budget. So initially, there was $1.5 million in CIP projects and we got it down to $448,000 by prioritizing. So absolutely, that's an important part of that process and I appreciate your comments about that.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Dan Larson. All right, we'll jump back over and if you're not speaking, if you wouldn't mind putting yourself on mute because I believe we get echoes when there are many folks off of mute. So I'll jump back over to Dieter. Dieter, are you able to? I thought I saw him off of mute, actually. So Dieter, are you there? Oh, he just put himself on mute. Okay, you're, you're off of mute now, Dieter, if you'd like to speak. No, 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 not working, okay. Um, the next one is Janet Fodzki?
Hi. Hi, it's Janet Fodzki. And I'm from Hebron. And I just want to agree that with you that things have changed a lot in the last few weeks and we're not the same financial, we're not in the same financial place we were. And we're not the same financial, we're not in the same financial place we were. I have my own personal opinions on, you know, the baseball field and play to play and all those things. But basically, what I would like you guys, like to see is you guys come in with a zero increase in a budget. How you do it is up to you. You guys know what things are important to you, way more than we do. And so, you know, you're the ones who can make the hard decisions. But basically, that's what I'm looking for is a zero increase. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, I think I'm seeing the next person that would like to speak is Andy Tierney.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Andy.
Well, that's the first step. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Law, and the members of the board for allowing me to speak. There were some questions regarding the DOT project. So I can just summarize as I'm virtually joining the meeting as well. Pat explained it very well. We've been working on this all day. Unfortunately, the DOT has their own pace. So we just got information today, which I had been trying to obtain for over a month. Actually, as soon as the bids were done, we reached out to DOT to try to get them to move along. And the response was not to get ahead of ourselves. So with that being said, that's not an excuse, but that's the reasoning that we just really got this information today. So the bottom line is two things. One, the only reason that Hebron is even involved with the RAM project, as Pat mentioned earlier, is the type of bonding. They don't give those to school districts. It has to go to a municipality. And because RAM is housed in Hebron was the reason that Hebron is involved. We've put many hours into this, along with our consulting engineers, try to help this project along. And we will continue to do that. The other project, where they were both lumped together when the bonding came out. What town in Hebron did is we went through Crog and we got lots of, we got lots of grants to fund the construction of our project. It's not our project. It's the intersection of 316 and 66, which the state lumped in to the project. That too is going to benefit RAM with bus backup, crosswalks and things of that nature. But we went out and got our own funding and we gave the excess money that was going to be used for construction to the RAM project. So with that being said, here we are today. And unfortunately, the bottom line is about $102,000 short, shortfall, from what we need to at least fulfill the agreements to the project. There still is no contingency in that money, but the engineering firm that we're using has put in a cost of $162,000 to do the inspections. That has not been negotiated. So we still feel that there might be some fluff in there. And hopefully, that can be negotiated down. And then once the DOT allows us to move forward, they sign the PAL agreement, then we can renegotiate with the successful low bidder and maybe get some more concessions. So we really don't have to kick in too much more of taxpayer or district money. So as of today, we're about $102,000 short. In that is $162,000 for inspections of the construction, which I think can be reduced. So we should have some sort of a contingency, whether it's another $100,000, that's up to you guys to decide. But I would at least have something. So hopefully, that clarifies the conversations that I heard. And once again, the 316 and 66 project, the funding was lumped in for both the design and the construction. But Hebron went out and got its own lots of grants. And the funding for the construction is coming out of a separate amount. The only thing that's in the DOT grant that involves RAM is the design monies, which is about $129,000. Hopefully, that clarifies some of the questions that were out there.
Okay, thank you, Andy.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on. David, did you want to speak?
Yeah. I've actually been in touch with several of the seniors in town in Andover that felt a little challenged with some of the technology and didn't have the ability to join. They also wanted to pass along the fact that, you know, their money is very, very tight for them. And they understand that, you know, RAM is an excellent school and it needs, you know, it's good to have a great campus, but they thought that there should be some things that should be cut or changed. Specifically, they were speaking about the pay-for-play and the outfield repairs. And that's all, just speaking for a bunch of seniors. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, David. Ken, something you wanted to ask? You know, I can't, I'm trying to keep this meeting as normal as possible, being that we're all virtual. So if you wouldn't mind asking your question, Ken, that would be much appreciated. Ctrl-D gets you off of mute. Jump over to Dieter. I see that you typed again. Hopefully, your challenges with the mute button may work. Is he still on mute, Pat? Dieter? Okay. Ken, circling back to you, do you want to ask your question?
Yeah, just as I typed there, there was an error, significant error, like $600,000 or more made during the calculations of the benefits costs when they're preparing this budget. That was caught, I think, about, what, about three weeks or four weeks ago? I just want to make sure that when the numbers are being generated for this budget, that we don't have any other errors in there? What's being done to make sure that everything is right?
So I can start with that. And certainly, Eva Gallup, our business manager, can chime in. When it comes to the insurance numbers, we did find an error that happened because of double counting using spreadsheets that we needed to use versus being able to use the system that we've now transitioned over to. So one of the things that I can say is that by transitioning to a new accounting system, we actually have checks and balances in there. We've also developed a separate checks and balances process within the Accounting Services Department to make sure that numbers are reviewed and processes are reviewed within that department differently than they have been before. But I think the biggest thing moving away from is allowing us now to have a system that does the calculating and the work rather than handmade spreadsheets. And I don't know, Eva, if you wanted to add anything else to that?
That basically covers it all. We did implement better checks and balances to make sure that any errors were caught. And rather than spot checking certain cells, we now looked at all the cell references to make sure that the formula is carried through.
Okay, thank you, Pat. Thank you, Eva. Ken, thank you for your question. Dieter, again, I don't know if he can speak. Okay. All right. And Joanne, I feel like you're just making comments. I don't know if you want to say anything. If you do, I'll give you a few seconds to come off of mute if you do want to say anything.
I think she said earlier that she did not want to make any comments.
Okay.
She had sent an email, but...
I'm just checking. So, Jo? Oh, she says, can you unmute me? Yeah, we cannot unmute. Yeah. We don't have the power. You could hit Ctrl. I don't know if you're on your phone or on the laptop, but you could hit Ctrl-D, laptop. You could, you know, click the picture and then a bar comes up at the bottom screen and there's a microphone and you can unmute yourself that way as well.
So is it possible that they put their question or comments in the chat if they're having challenges?
I wanted to try to, like I said, try to keep this as normal as possible and have people ask their questions to receive answers that way. Because there was a lot of comments in the beginning of keeping track of the presentation. So maybe she'll try, she'll try to get herself off of mute. It's not working, sorry. But I did email the list of cuts. Yes, we did receive your email. I believe the entire board received your email. Jo, I'll turn it over to you, Jo.
Okay, thanks, Sue. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Well, I appreciate you taking the time to get all this done. And as Vinny commented, I've listened to a lot of the Board of Finance meetings, gone to some of them, previous to COVID. I think we understand and we appreciate everybody's comments. These are different times, the last three weeks. I think one thing to take away from it is that we are trying to get to zero. And my comment, as I guess, as speaking as an individual, but as a board member also, it's kind of hard to wear a couple of different hats here. But every year, we go through this with the letters and listen to the Board of Finance and Selectmen. You know, it's difficult to try and put these budgets together. But it seems to me every time, you know, I've been on this board almost eight years, every time it's RAM. It's never the town's budgets. It's never their CIPs. You know, as taxpayers, we try to support our organizations and our towns and everything. But it seems like this school is always a problem for the residents of the district. And I just want to kind of remind people, nicely remind people, that this is our school, your school. It does cost a lot of money. It employs a lot of people. It's an economic driver. And the school has a lot of problems. It's always had a lot of problems. There's a lot of us on the board that are trying to fix these problems. It costs money to fix the problems. We've also done a lot of great things that nobody seems to talk about. The window project, that remained stagnant for many, many years until a few individuals and some of the board members that finally got this thing approved, got a lot of money with very little cost to the taxpayers. We implemented savings in the gas projects, changing over from oil, which was, reduced the carbon footprint, number one. Number two, it reduced taxes and lowered the budget costs getting off of oil. So the, you know, we, you know, people talk about these field projects and I know it's a continual conversation every year about fields. Well, the fields are a safety concern, and that is paramount, I think, for every board member. You can't let safety concerns go away or go by. They have to be addressed. And unfortunately, they cost money. Many, many years ago, before I got on this board, I start to sound like a broken record sometimes, but this school doesn't look, did not look like it did nine years ago. It was a lot worse. I would just encourage people to go out and look at RAM, inside and out, see where your tax dollars are going. And look at this school that brings people into our communities. Marlboro has got, their grant list has gone way up. Hebron's grant list has gone up. During, you know, the great times of the last 10 years. So COVID is here. It's going to go away at some point. We're not going to remain in this situation. But we, we are, we need to make sure that, you know, when we have issues and problems, they have to get fixed. And yes, some things can be pushed off, but we did that for a lot of years and we just cannot afford that. And I think that's where people get into trouble with towns, when you keep pushing off deferred maintenance, you run into problems where they cost you three or four times more than what they would have if you just done the maintenance itself. So I just would like to say thank you to everybody, to their comments. As a board member, I respect your opinions greatly. It's not an easy decision, but we do know that we do have to reduce and I think we have a plan to get there. And I look forward to the conversation later on. Thank you.
Thank you, Jo. Scott?
Hey, Sue, it's me. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
All right, great. So I want to start off by saying how excited I am to see the numbers are going up and down, but minus the board members, we've had close to 45 or 50 folks from all the towns on the call. And it's rare that we see more than just a few people as part of our meeting. So I'm really excited about that. And also that just shy of 100 folks took advantage of the survey that got put out. And I'll circle back to that in a second. Quick comments on pay-to-play and this, like some of the other members have said, this is part resident and part board member. I just want to ensure anybody who's listening to the call and anybody who's had a conversation with any of us knows that this, to be truthful, that there's been many, many thoughtful considerations and a really strong analysis of the pay-to-play program that's been going on for months now. Two votes that the board decided to take pay-to-play off the table. And just from a quick look at the survey, and this by no means is official, I don't know the situation with this. Hopefully, anybody who took part or anybody who's a resident will be able to go in and see all the survey comments. But I can tell you right now, in a quick look a couple hours ago, over 50% of the comments were in support of not having pay-to-play reinstated, essentially, across all three towns. It's my rough calculations by reading all 94 comments minus, or 96 minus the two test comments, is that there were, it was 15 in favor of and 33 against. I could be off by one or two there and there might have been a few doubles. So I just wanted to mention that. Another key thing that I'd really like to bring up is that I've heard several folks from both the town governments and taxpayers as well, who are on the phone here, say that they wanted us to be close to a near-zero increase. And although many things have changed today, to include the Department of Transportation, I don't know what else to call it other than a surprise, that is a major change and definitely a wrench into the system. Several members of the board have been working diligently, essentially every day, which is very hard in this environment. And a near-zero budget was presented unofficially to the board earlier. I don't know if it was over the weekend or whatever. We're struggling with, because of the virus, the inability for us to meet as we normally do and have workshops and so forth. But there is a plan on the table that exists that was, that had us less than $10,000 of an increase and literally just a teeny increase to the budget. And I'd like to see collaboration. I don't know if this, if we're able to get there tonight with all the surprises that we have as early as late this afternoon. And the last thing that I'll say is every conversation that I've been a part of and every meeting that I've been a part of, going back to last fall, every member of the board prioritizes the students, the faculty and the staff, and what's best for the towns and the decisions that they make. And there's a couple of themes that, for whatever reason, that will always escape me, have become the center point of this year's discussions. But I just wanted to, from my perspective, and I'm sure the other members will agree, you have no idea how deeply and how long we dive into these issues and discuss those. So that's my comments.
Okay, thank you, Scott. So at this time, I don't see anybody question. So I'll just pause for a minute and see if anybody else has any, anything that they would like to state on this, uh, public hearing.
Kathleen does.
Okay.
Hi, everybody. Um, I just wanted to kind of reiterate what Scott was saying and, um, to let you know that no decision is taken lightly. And I, I significantly, um, respect the conversation that is going on and the concerns being presented to us. Um, it is a huge, uh, burden, I would say. I feel very stressed by, uh, making a decision, um, knowing that people do not have the opportunity to vote. That's not something we usually do. Um, so I understand the feeling. We're a democratic, um, society. We usually vote, we, you know, we try to agree. Um, I am concerned about that as well, but I want whoever's on this, um, on this call to understand, um, my point of view and just to reiterate that we are going to try to do the best we can. We have, um, we recognize COVID. We recognize the impact and increases on the community. And, um, no decision has been taken lightly, um, including pay to play. And I do not want that to be the only thing that drives our budget. There are so many other factors, um, but I understand people's concerns. That's all.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions, comments, feedback? All right, one, one last time, and then we will adjourn this public hearing and then move into our regular Board of Ed meeting. So I'll give it four minutes. Other comments to make for tonight's public hearing.
And just as a reminder, Sue, that, um, when this is the same, the board meeting will be using this same connection. So if people are, are done with this, they can just click off. But if they're staying for the board meeting, it's the same linking in. We'll just end this and start the next one.
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, Board Chair, this is Andrew Tenny from Hebron.
Hi.
Would you like me to continue on this call into the board meeting?
It might be beneficial, Sue, to have him stay, uh, so that we can, he can, um, help with some of the DOT discussion.
Okay, all right. Yes, Andy, if, if, it would be great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Joe, you had something to say?
Uh, that was going to be my comment. I, I was going to ask if Andy could stay on, uh, because, uh, uh, I don't know if the, if the public really knows that, that this was just dropped on us today. And it, um, and I do have a, as, as a, as a, as a taxpayer, I do have a problem personally with, us funding a state DOT project. This, um, you know, asking for a couple hundred thousand dollars for, um, a DOT project that has now been over, overspent, uh, not by anybody's fault, other than just, you know, it's been delayed for two years. Uh, I, I, I think that, um, you know, it's, it's really just bad timing right now to get this information today. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. All right, I don't see any other comments. So we will, um, adjourn this meeting. Pat, do I need a motion for that or can it just be adjourned?
I would make a motion to adjourn.
Would someone like to make a motion from the board to adjourn this meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. It's Jessica.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second by Kathleen.
Okay, thank you. So all, all those, and, or I'll have to call people's names. So hang on, let me get my list. So all those in favors to adjourning. Dave, your vote. Jessica?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Judy? Judy? Kathleen?
Hi.
Rob?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Stephanie?
Hi.
Vinnie?
Hi.
And myself, aye. And just one more time, Judy, are you out there? Okay. So the meeting is, motion passes, meeting is adjourned. So now we'll, we will move over to our regular board meeting. Um, we'll just do another roll call. So I will call out your name if you could just, um, state that you're present. Uh, David? I know this is painful. I apologize.
I'm here.
Okay. Uh, Jessica?
Here.
Joe?
Here.
Judy? Kathleen?
Here.
Rob?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
I just saw her, so I know she's there, but I'll give her a minute to come off of you.
Are you looking for me?
Yeah, Stephanie, okay, good.
Here, sorry.
Uh, Vinnie?
Here.
And Sue is here. All right, um, would, would you all be okay to waive the pledge of? Yeah.
Yes.
All right, um, public comments? If anybody has any public comments, if you could type your name in the chat box or if you, you could, you know, speak up if you're not on the chat to make a public comment. Okay, I'm hearing no public comment. Um, item four, add and delete agenda items. Is there any additions or deletes to agenda? Okay, hearing none. Uh, moving on to the, uh, Board Chair report, I just have two quick things. Um, I, I did see the update from Jane on the program up on the 23rd. Um, the, the question is out to the committee members if there really is a need to meet on the 23rd. So does anybody have any feedback on that?
Sue, this is Scott. I, I do, um, I, I think what you're talking about is the, uh, was that program in finance? Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I just, I haven't had a chance to talk to anybody else today with everything else that's going on. But I'm just not really sure with what we have going on tonight. Another meeting Wednesday. We're kind of bad. We haven't had a meeting in a month. I'm not sure. We need to have seven meetings this week.
I, I agree. That's why I, I, if everyone is okay with canceling this meeting, uh, that's something we definitely can do.
I agree.
Okay, all right, perfect. So what, well, if anyone doesn't want to cancel it, I, I would say speak up now or it will be canceled. And, uh, Pat will take care of canceling that. Okay. Um, topic really was the Wednesday meeting. We're hoping that will be a very quick meeting. We just joined after any additions, subtractions, anything that we're doing tonight. Uh, Pat and Eva and the administration will, um, write us a new figure and that new figure will be presented on Wednesday. And we would just vote on that figure on Wednesday. And that meeting should really be very quick. Um, shouldn't be anything long. So I just wanted to let everyone know that. Moving on to six, um, Report of the Superintendent, Pat?
Keeping it short, um, just, we, um, were on vacation last week. We are back with our first day of, um, back with schooling from home today. And, um, have been working with our staff and faculty on looking at, um, some grading discussions. But overall, um, the feedback has been positive from both parents, students and teachers. The few issues we've been having with schooling from home, we've been trying to address. But overall, um, things have been going well. We are still waiting, um, obviously for the next announcement from the governor around anything that happens after May 20th. We continue to serve lunches, um, at RAM and in Andover on Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays. And I have, um, actually had quite a few families taking advantage of those lunches. And so we know breakfast and lunch, actually. We know that are, um, important for, um, our families and the communities. So that's it for updates at this point.
I have a question on that, if I may. Joe, you're.
Okay, Joe.
Uh, Pat, it's, uh, are we, when you talk about the feeding, uh, are we feeding? How many people are we feeding, um, at this time? And is there a limitation, uh, on who we are, who we should be feeding as far as providing meals for?
We have applied for waivers from the federal government, which has allowed us, we feed anybody 18 and under. Um, and we will then be, so we're just tracking our meals. And I'm not sure if Eva could give me a really quick average number per week right now. Cause I know she's doing, she's holding the averages and looking at those so that we can submit those. So Eva, what is our general number?
So we started off stronger actually, um, in March. But now that we have the waiver in place, um, our numbers went down a little bit. So, um, I believe the first week we served about 300 students. Um, and as of today, I believe there was 182 that we served, um, between two towns. Um, but that is for breakfast and lunch. And originally we were only serving lunches.
And Eva, can you explain the waiver?
Oh, so the waiver, okay. So originally it started off with, um, uh, the, the plea for districts to help feed students. And so we cannot, um, discriminate or identify in any way, shape or form. So we have to feed all students. Um, so anyone under the age of 18 down, unless they're in our transition program and we're aware of them, they can be at the age of 21. Um, so the waiver now is basically creates an open site, as it is called. An open site means that any, any child in, uh, 18 or under can come and we can feed them no questions asked.
And we're tracking the meals so that we can apply for, um, reimbursement, correct?
Yeah, yeah. So we get the, um, the reimbursement from the federal lunch program based on the numbers that we serve. Sorry.
Thank you.
Sue, you're on mute. Yep, thank you. Um, moving down to the consent agenda, um, 7.1, um, approval of the minutes. And then 7.2, personal action, unpaid, updated paid leave request. Um, do we want to do those separately, Pat?
So is it possible to go through some of those, um, personnel actions? I did not get my packet again. This is the fourth time I haven't received this. So, um, I don't have anything to say.
We can do them separately and, um, which is probably better to do the minutes. And Dave, there's only one personnel action.
Yeah, so why don't we do? Do I have a, can I have a motion to approve 7.1? Shoot.
I make a motion to accept the minutes, says red.
Okay, do I have a second?
I second. It's Jessica.
Okay, we'll go down and ask for comments. So David, do you have any comments on approving the minutes?
Uh, no.
Jessica?
No.
Joe?
Nope.
Judy?
No.
Kathleen?
Sorry.
No, no, okay. Rob?
I.
Scott? We're not at I yet, Scott. Uh, Rob. Uh, Scott?
No.
Stephanie?
No.
Vinnie?
No.
Sue, no. All right, need to vote. So go down just again to take a vote. David?
I'm going to abstain because I don't.
Okay, Jessica?
Hi.
Joe?
I'm sorry, Sue, what are we voting on here? The, which, the second, the?
Text. No, just to approve 7.1, the meeting minutes.
Uh, yes, I approve, I, I vote yes.
Okay, Judy?
Yes.
Kathleen? Kathleen?
Sorry, my computer keeps getting stuck. Yes.
Okay, Rob?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Vinnie?
Yes.
Okay, and I vote yes. So motion passes. So moving on to 7.2, if we could just make the motion just for discussion. So, and then Pat, I will have Pat, um, update you, David, on what, uh, the, the action is here. So could I just have a motion for 7.2, personal action?
I'll make the motion to accept.
Okay, Rob?
Seconded by Joe.
Seconded by Joe, okay. So let's go to our, why don't we have Pat? Pat, could you just briefly explain what this one is?
At the last board meeting, Jeremy Zarell had, um, asked for unplate unpaid leave. Um, and he, and that was approved by the board. Um, he had not really reviewed with, um, the union and the contract, what his options could be for asking for leave. So he has since done that. And his letter in the packet explains about the fact that, um, his daughter is, is ill. And, um, he has been, he is the parent who is going to stay home and help to take care of her. And what he is requesting is to have the board consider, um, providing him general leave, which as he states in the letter, is on page 17, it's under Articles 19, Section B, General Leave, which allows the board with or without salary to grant, um, leave to mem, members of the teachers' union. Um, and so what he is asking for is in the contract, that teachers can use 10 days paid sick leave for illnesses for themselves. He's already used, or family, excuse me. He's already used that. And what he's asking for is the fact that he still has 60 days accumulated sick time and would like to continue to be paid for those by using his sick days, while on FMLA leave. So he would continue to be paid. Um, I, I do not have in front of me the number from Jan as to how that would cost, but that would be their per diem rate for the 60 days. And, um, I can, I'm sorry, I don't have that number. So I, I would have to get that for you, but, um, so what he's asking for is the board to approve paying him for 60 days of sick time while he's out on FMLA leave.
Okay, so why don't I go down the list, see if anyone has any questions or comments? So David, you're up first.
No questions.
Uh, Jessica?
No, no questions.
Joe?
Uh, what's Pat's recommendation? And then? And then?
And what it, what my recommendation is that we not pay for the full 60 days because this, this is a concern that I do have with, again, setting precedent that we allow people to get paid or leave beyond what they are able to be qualified here on a regular basis in the contract. There is the stipulation under general leave. It does say with or without salary to be granted. So I would recommend that we look at paying him for the, I believe, I have to look at the rest of the calendar, for three to 45 of the days, but not the full 60.
So my question is, the 60 days belong to him, though, correct?
He has 60 sick days, yes.
And those would be, those are in his bank? And those would be, if he was to leave the district, we would still have to pay him for those days, correct?
No.
No, I don't believe that's part of the contract. They don't get paid for their sick days when they leave the district. That is an old stipulation.
And only a portion of them when they retire, not when they leave the district.
Right. No.
Okay, so?
And that, and that, and the stipulation was removed years ago.
Right, but we have very few people that actually, we've only got like two people left in the district that are still working under that. But again, in the, in the, in the contract, it states that they can use 10 accumulated sick days for illness in the immediate family, which he's already done. And then they can apply for FMLA. Not sure why. Is that you, Joe?
I'm still here, yep.
Okay, it just, I'm hearing a lot of static. So we provide them with leave, but I don't know that we would pay them for the full 60 days. That's not, the sick days are what they can use when they're sick. So it's, the contract states we can, we pay for 10.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Judy, do you have any questions or comments?
I do not.
Okay, Kathleen?
Matt, thank you for clarifying that. Does a teacher's contract state that the, the 10 sick leave are used specifically for family? Or are there any extensions to that, or is it just personal use?
So it says that, hold on, I will read that for you. Teachers may use up to 10 days of accumulated sick leave for illness in the immediate family. Immediate family is defined as blah, 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 blah. The board may require medical documentation for the use of such leave and may designate this leave as FMLA while qualifying when appropriate under law, which he is under FMLA leave at this point.
Okay, thank you. No other questions?
Okay, Rob, do you have any questions?
I have none.
Scott?
No questions.
Stephanie?
No questions.
Vinnie?
No questions.
I don't have any questions. So now let's take a vote. So David?
Was there a motion?
Yeah, the motion was to accept the updated leave request, 7.2.
For 60 days, or did anybody put a number of days?
He has 60 in the request.
Okay, so that's the motion. Okay, I'm gonna vote against it.
Okay, Jessica?
I vote against also, but is there a way that we can ask him to amend it with the number of days that you had suggested, Pat?
The board can amend the number of days in the motion. And actually, so if the, the board could amend it, and then hold on an amended motion.
Does someone want to make a friendly motion, a friendly change to the motion?
I would rather not.
So I would like?
For him to have the 60 days, so can we see how that goes?
Sure. Makes sense.
Okay, so Joe?
No on the 60.
Okay, Judy?
No.
Kathleen?
Was the motion amended? I didn't, I'm sorry, I missed something there. No?
It has not been amended right now, no.
Okay, so we're saying, so no.
That's your vote, no?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Rob?
Yes, it's his time, pay him for it.
Scott? Scott?
Sorry, I was fumbling with my mute. I'm a yes.
Stephanie?
I'm in agreement with yes.
Vinnie?
Uh, yes.
And I'm, so that's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 4, 5, oh no. So, Pat, what do we do?
You were cut out, Sue. What was your?
I was a yes, so it's 5 no, 5 yes.
I'll change mine to yes. If it's for 60 days.
I would also, yeah.
Okay, if we're changing to yes, then I either want to stay or change to yes.
Well, pick one, Judy.
I'll vote yes, then.
I'm confused. I thought we were gonna amend it, or go back after to talk about it. So if it's, if you don't?
We have to make, we have to do something to this motion. So you, someone can amend it? And we all voted, basically. So 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, we have 8 yes and 2 no. So motion passes.
So just make mine a yes.
Okay.
Sue, before we go on, can we go back to public comment? I forgot about the two written comments that needed to be read at the board.
Yes, can we finish this motion, though?
Yes, sorry.
Yep, so we have 9 in, and 1 no. Okay, so motion passes. Hopefully, you got all of that, Karen. Um, so now moving back to public comment, go ahead, Pat.
I'm sorry, I forgot, I think we're stuck in my pile of papers for this. We have two public comments that were provided to the board that were asked to be read at the board meeting. First one is from Susan Lesser, the chairman of the Marlboro Board of Finance. Dear Ram board members, I am writing to again on behalf of the Marlboro Board of Finance regarding the 2021 Ram operating budget. The reduction in the budget caused by the correction of an error has been helpful in easing the impact of the budget on Marlboro taxpayers. We would like to reiterate our request for the Ram Board of Education to reinstate pay for participation fees, which were $164,300 in the FY 1920. This is a substantial revenue source that historically has been used to help defray the cost of extracurricular activities, including sports. Also, the final audit numbers from the 1819 fiscal year show a surplus of $411,880. We respectfully ask that this surplus be applied against the 2021 fiscal year operating budget to reduce the burden placed on taxpayers. We are not asking you to remove any new initiatives from the Ram budget or make cuts in the existing programs. However, we do not feel this is the time to eliminate a revenue stream, i.e. pay for play funds. In addition, the budget surplus is money that the taxpayers have paid, and we feel these funds should be returned to the taxpayers in the form of a budget reduction in the amount of the surplus. As you are aware, we are facing uncertain economic times. Most experts are predicting a severe recession, perhaps the worst we have seen in our lifetime. We just don't know. We feel it is prudent to help residents cope with financial uncertainties by reducing the tax burden as much as possible. We appreciate your consideration in this manner, matter, respectfully, Susan Lesser. And then there is another one from Greg Lowry. It says, please circulate this message to board members, members of the Ram Board of Ed and read the message at your next Ram Board meeting. So you have seen this from Greg Lesser, to Greg Lowry, excuse me. We urge the Ram Board to restore the participant fee revenue stream of approximately $160,000. We see that extracurricular expenses have risen. We also note that participant fee revenue covers only a portion of the extracurricular costs. To remain current, means still timed. Although the Constitution requires government to provide a free education, extracurricular activities are not so required. We also note that there is a mechanism to waive the participation fee for families that are experiencing financial hardship. Therefore, the participant fee is not a significant barrier to student involvement. We urge the Ram Board of Ed to appropriate the entire prior year surplus of approximately $400,000 to defray the levy on the town. It's not merely the amount of the surplus above 1% on the annual budget proposal. We urge the Ram Board of Ed to reduce the number of certified staff in light of the forecast reduction of enrollment of approximately 90 students heading into the 2021 school year. It is our understanding that the average cost of a certified member at Ram is approximately $80,000, including benefits. Note that we have asked for salary detail from you in the past. This type of detail has been provided by the local Board of Education in Town Marlboro upon citizens' requests. If we can expand staff, if we can expand staff as enrollment grows, we must be able to contract our certified staff as enrollment declines. We understand that schools have fixed costs. Certified staff are not among the fixed costs and should be adjusted with the number of students. We note that your staff is highly trained and experienced and is well positioned to satisfy current and future educational mandates. There are simply more certified staff that can be justified by the defining enrollment. Lamont's Executive Boarder 7I suspends in-person voting and eliminates the traditional annual meeting and budget referendum. As a result, it is important for the Ram Board of Ed members to understand that they take on an additional role during this budget cycle, that of proxy voters. Members of the Ram Board of Ed are due to consider the public comments that are contributed by the dedicated email address and other means. We suggest that email comments be directed to the entire Ram Board of Ed real-time through the listserv process as well as collated so that popular themes are highlighted and scored for the board as they consider the qualitative and quantitative aspects of the comments in their deliberations leading up to the final approval. It is our understanding that the Ram Board of Ed will provide the Ram budget to the public on 3/31/20 along with a dedicated email address to receive public comments. We further understand that Ram Board of Ed members will receive updates based on the flow of public comments, including options to adjust the budget with estimated dollars associated with each option between 3/31/20 release of the Ram budget proposal and the Ram Board of Ed meeting scheduled for 4/20/20. The Ram Board of Ed will consider the options and dollars associated with each option, adopt, adjust, or decline to adopt options at the 4/20/20 Ram Board of Ed meeting and plan to reconvene on 4/20/20 to approve the FY 21 budget consistent with Lamont's Executive Boarder 7I.
Matt, can I interrupt you? We're getting bad feedback, and it's getting to the point where it's echoing. Could you mute 3/3?
Sure.
Thank you. Oh no, she hung up.
Instead of hitting the mute, she did the hang up.
Well, she did, she did hit mute, but she hung up.
I did that earlier.
Yeah. Don't give her a minute to join.
Else, but I also decided that I, I was done. I'm almost done this. The Town of Marlboro will then incorporate the approved Ram budget into the Town of Marlboro FY 21 budget proposal at a meeting on 4/20/4/20. We plan to publish the Town of Marlboro FY 21 budget proposal on 4/20/7/20 along with the Marlboro email that will receive budget comments. This will allow the public slightly more than three weeks to submit comments prior to the Marlboro Board of Finance meeting on 5/13/20 when the Marlboro FY 21 budget will be approved, consistent with Lamont's Executive Boarder 7I. Please keep us informed if adjustments to this timeline are needed. Thank you, Susan Lesser and Greg Lowry.
All right, so moving down, we don't have any old business. Moving down to new business, 9.1, review of expenditures and revenue reports. Eva?
All right, I hope you can all hear me. So in light of the COVID situation, I renewed how I explained what and how I came to the net positive projection of the 4/4/9/904. My bigger concern is making sure that we get all the revenues in that we need in order to be able to spend the budget that we have adopted and amended in place. Currently, our excess cost, we're still awaiting the final payment for our March 1 filing, according to all the webinars from the state of Connecticut. The state will be processing that. If there are any adjustments for year-end expenditures, that will hit the town's education cost share payments on April of 2021. Currently, we have student parking that has been paid for the full year. And the question on the table is if we will be reimbursing approximately, the spring parking, which would total approximately $8,700. We did not collect any spring sport fees, so there's no reimbursements there. And then, of course, there was no utilization of the buildings for rentals from March 16 through August 20, probably, because of the DOT construction, if that goes in, in, in the way it's supposed to. And then I'm still expecting levy payments from the towns. I haven't heard otherwise at the moment. So as for expenditures, are, we had, due to the COVID situation, Anthem has allowed a special open enrollment period that we held. We had three staff members, one of which had a spouse also, join our plan. So we had an approximate cost of $11,693 for those people to join our plan. Our normal open enrollment starts in May, so we should have that for next fiscal year that we are going to be doing online through our employee self-serve portal, which is part of our new financial package. Excuse me, at this time, spring sports will not be taken into account to their savings in any athletic, between official supplies, conference fees, and transportation. Due to an MOA, we are paying the coaching stipends. That is processed in June, as they normally would be. Our regular education transportation, we're supposed to be negotiating with our transportation vendor. We are currently having legal assist us with this. Special education, transportation, and tuition also are supposed to be negotiated with. The tuition and/or services are being, they're, they're being delivered, so we can pay those. The transportation is a different story. But being that many of our transportation to the outer districts are per diem basis and not a year-round contract, because they're, because of IEP placements can change, we're not as concerned about paying for those at the moment. And most of the bus contractors have laid off their, off their employees. So there's no proof of that they're paying or putting people back on their payrolls. We have, also, we're, because we're paying for meals to be served, where some, the budget will be absorbing some of that expenditure costs. We also have new items that needed to be purchased in terms of educational supplies and/or hardware for the schooling from home. And then, of course, legal services will be more than, more than normal because of the heavy utilization during this timeframe. And then we also had to purchase additional cleaning supplies for the facility. We will have additional areas of savings for dues and fees, water, electrical, travel reimbursement, professional development, as well as substitute teaching staff. Future impact would be the unemployment claims that may hit next year. Future impact would be the unemployment claims that may hit next year's budget, if any go through. And then, but that's a low level of concern. And then, of course, any new enrollees for our health insurance that might come on during our open enrollment, which happens in May. And then, I'm just more so concerned about the revenues and making sure that we collect all of those in. And then our capital improvement budget, the HVAC project is moving forward and is scheduled for completion in June. Do you have any questions on the operating budget and/or net projections?
Can I ask a question?
I was going to go down the list, is that okay?
Absolutely.
David, any questions?
Yeah, actually, Eva, I did have a question. The way the insurance works, if any spouses were laid off and that spouse carried the insurance, they can then come back to Ram and come on Ram's insurance.
Correct, so if there's a life event change at any point in time, that person can come onto our insurance. We haven't had any of those as of yet.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Okay, Jessica?
Yeah, just a quick question. I know some students prepay for meals also for the school year. Is there anything that's been looked into regarding returning that money or any questions?
We normally don't return money. It rolls from year to year, so unless the student is graduating, but I'll cover that when I cover the Chartwell's monthly expenditures.
Okay, great. I'm just wondering if some families might change their mind based on what's going on in their lives. And then also just a quick question, is there any sort of timeline regarding the transportation negotiations?
The legal has reached out to our contractor and we're awaiting word as of right now. So it's in their court right now.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Joe?
Yes, now that pay-to-play has been eliminated, how, Eva, does this factor into our accounting staff? And how will that, what's the impact to that, is it going to be reducing reports and collections and all that?
So our collections are done online and there's really, that's a fraction of what the staff does. So I don't see any reason to eliminate or reduce staffing time. That's, again, just a portion, a very fraction of a portion of what everybody does.
Joe, any follow-up to that before I move on?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, thank you, Sue.
Okay, Judy? Blaine?
Just a quick question about excess costs. Will it change because, are we still paying tuition for kids who are?
So it's not, it's not full tuition and it's not full services. It's distant type of, so I'm not sure what the billing is going to come in as. But based on all the conference calls that I've been on, everyone's expecting it to be reduced. Thank you.
Rob?
I have no questions, thank you.
Scott?
Yeah, hi, I guess this is for Eva. You gave us a pretty good rundown of all the additional costs and some costs that are to be determined based on, I don't know, I heard legal advice and some other things and probably some time for you to tabulate that. What kind of sense do you have for, with us running leader, the building running leader as a district? There's just many functions of the school that aren't taking place with very few, if any, human beings in the building. What are the, what is your sense of projected savings at this time? Especially since we're going to be closed for a minimum of all-in 45, 50, 60 days when this is all said and done. And I'm sure you probably don't have it off the top of your head right now, but if you could just speak to it now and then I'd like to see in one document, we've talked a lot about the additional costs or unscheduled costs, but those savings kind of all in one place for us to keep track of that.
So I'm keeping track of that for FEMA reimbursement. So back in, I think it was 2016, there was a blizzard and we finally received money from FEMA. So any FEMA reimbursement that might apply to this might take five or six years for us to see, to realize that reimbursement from the federal government. So yes, we're tracking that in a separate spreadsheet. But based on what I know as of March 31st, that $449,000 is a comfortable number. As the weeks go on, we will know more, but unfortunately, a lot of this won't tie out or we won't know all of the solid figures until about mid-May, towards the end of May.
Okay, I'm not sure about the FEMA piece. I was actually thinking about just differences in the way the building is. I'm just assuming, as an example, something like the level of maintenance that's required when you have hundreds of kids running in and out of the school every day internally is different than when that traffic's not taking place. There's, I'm sure we probably don't have the, everybody's favorite, the door monitor at the main door, since we're not opened after hours. So this thing that probably have nothing to do with FEMA. I was thinking along more of those lines of regular operational costs that you would expect to be reduced in a reduced staffing of the school.
So we're keeping all our staff whole, so that means we're paying all our permanent staff members and as per union agreements. So I don't realize outside of overtime, I don't foresee any savings in personnel outside of substitute teachers because we won't be utilizing substitute staff. However, the maintenance crew is there. As for the HVA system that's being implemented right now, our custodial and maintenance staff is there Monday through Friday, ensuring that the building is decontaminated, cleaned, repaired, items that we couldn't get to when kids are actually running in the building. Other folks are working from home, so as in terms of staffing reductions, in terms of savings from staffing reductions, no, there aren't any currently to speak of. But yes, I will keep you informed and we'll track that information for you.
Okay, for a simple time, since we have a lot more to go on the agenda, that's fine. I just would recommend that the board, we probably should revisit this. There's the personnel, there's other, there's utilities and many other things. So I just think we should keep closer track of those and probably have another discussion on that. But that's, thanks, I'm fine for now.
Okay, Stephanie? I'm all set, no other questions. Vinnie?
Just a verification on the bus contract, was that mandated by the governor? And if so, are we doing anything to make sure that the bus drivers are getting paid? Or, because I'm hearing that staff is getting, is getting laid off due to the enhanced unemployment benefits that the state and the federal government has given.
So Executive Order 7, and I believe it was, was one of those executive orders, number 7. We are to negotiate with our contractor, but they have to provide proof of payment to their staff to ensure that people are being paid and not on unemployment. And that's the contention.
And who's handling that verification in-house for us?
That would be Dr. Law and myself.
Okay, thank you, I'm good.
This is Judy, Sue, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can we get a very simple to understand list of expenditures that have increased and those that have decreased? For instance, you said we maybe needed more things for at home. Could we see that very simply in dollars and cents? And then any contracts that don't, that we're paying partial on? Can that be written up very clearly so we can have a good handle on those?
And what do you mean by contracts that we're paying partially on?
Maybe I misunderstood you. I thought that you said that for distance learning, that we, with some of our outplacements, that we were not paying the full price. Is that inaccurate?
So there's a difference between when the kids actually go into the facility to be taught and/or being taught distance learning. So I'm not sure if I have all the full costs from the outplacement facilities as of yet, so that I could provide that information. But for the regular ed students, I can provide that information.
I am especially interested in the irregular things that may swing the budget. So I can be patient and wait. If you can just simply, as you get that information, add to that list, that would be perfect.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, so now we need to vote on 9.1. Or do we need to make?
You don't need to vote on anything. So 9.1B is actually the student activity. If there's no questions there, that's just a regular report. And then 9.1C is about Chartwell's monthly expenditures. And basically, historically, what we've done, and I know COVID is non-historic, we usually do not reimburse unless it's $25 or more and someone requests a reimbursement. We usually roll from year to year unless the person is leaving and/or graduating. So seniors, that's what, one of the thought processes right now is seniors will not be probably utilizing their food service. So most likely their balances would need to be refunded. And that's approximately $5,200. So outside of that, yes, if there's a severe need, if someone expresses a need and wants their money back, of course, I would reimburse them their money in light of the situation.
So I did have one more question for Eva, the last thing. Eva, you had mentioned that it seems like there's a significantly more money being spent on legal fees. Are those, are those figures in, have they been billed out or do we have?
No, no, they haven't been billed out yet. And as we're finding, because shipment handles many districts in the state of Connecticut, they're actually doing a prorated cost across all their districts for any transportation negotiation. So it's not even something that I can even hazard how much it'll be.
But we have, we've got other issues besides transportation, right?
I mean. Oh, correct, yes, because there's a lot that needs to go through legal, especially when trying to interpret the executive orders and how they pertain to education and making sure that we had everything in place and that we wouldn't put ourselves in a position to get sued if we weren't making sure that everyone was educated appropriately.
So those numbers that you gave us could be considerably higher or lower depending on what you're thinking.
Correct, yes, so right now, it's definitely a moving target.
Thank you.
And so does anyone have any questions on the food service monthly expenditure report?
Joe here, one last question on it. What is the balance on the food service right now? Where are we at with that?
So as of March 31st, we had $73,941 in the account.
And what, what's, what is that money going to be used for?
The majority of that is student balances. And it can only be used for food service, it cannot be used for anything else.
$73,000 is the balance for the children that they paid in?
Majority of it is the balance of children's accounts, yes.
And do we have, don't we have other monies in that account for equipment?
The only monies you get in that account are for the reimbursement from the federal food service, lunch meal reimbursement, the healthy food reimbursement.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so moving on to 9-2.
So we're bringing back around the fact that we went out to bid on an RFP for food management service. We followed all of the appropriate processes as described by the state of Connecticut, did the visits, had our committee. The committee reviewed all of the materials. I also provided in last week's update to the board, information from Andy Paul, helping to explain the need for following that once we've gone out to bid for this process that we need to be able to follow through on the information and the process for the RFP. So again, I'm bringing to the board the request to provide us the opportunity to get into negotiation with Witsons, who is the company that won the RFP bid, and be able to move that forward, because as of right now, we do not have a vendor for food service starting in the fall. Eva, I don't want to add anything else?
So based on what Dr. Law has just stated, so every five years, the USDA ensures that schools go out to bid every five years. The contracts are renewable on an annual basis. In light of the poor administrative review that we had and all the feedback that we got in April, May, June, and October of 2019, when we were presenting to the board, whether in writing and/or verbally, Dr. Law and I went out to bid so that, we went out to RFP so that we could ensure that we had a good company to work with and that the district isn't put into another financial predicament as we were assessed a financial fee that, yes, Chartwell's did pay. So we just want to make sure that if there are any other questions, that we can start moving the process forward.
Do we need to make, just to move it forward, to change vendors, what's the motion look like?
So the motion is for the board to approve the recommended food service vendor and negotiate the contract with that recommended vendor.
And the recommended vendor is?
Is Witsons.
Okay, so do I have a motion on the table from a board member?
I'm open, Dave.
Okay, do I have a second? I'll be the second. Items?
You're cut out, Sue, just your.
Oh, so I said I would second it, I don't know if you heard that. So now that, okay, so I seconded and I'm just going to go around for comments now. So David, do you have any comments?
No comments, hi.
Jessica?
No, no comments.
Joe?
Quickly, so there's no cost savings, this is a one-to-one. I think I asked that question at the last board meeting and never got an answer, so.
Actually, the bidder, Witsons, who came in, is actually lower than what Chartwell's has proposed for their new contract, if they were awarded.
Was that in our packet?
Yes.
Can you reference the page for that for me, please? And my second question is.
No, no, you're right, it wasn't in the packet, my bad.
Okay. My second question is, from a financial standpoint, because we are on uncharted waters right now, is this new company viable to survive through COVID? Would be a concern of mine right now.
I'm writing that down, but their financials have him where they are viable to be able to survive this.
Okay, no other questions, thanks.
Judy? Kathleen?
Just quickly, and I think we talked about this, but the quality of the food and service we would get is still going to be good for our students.
So when the committee, we actually did a site visit to Killingworth, I believe is the Killingley, Killingley High School. And I actually walked around the tables at the lunchtime and actually spoke to the kids and watched what the high school kids were actually doing. And a lot of them cleaned their plates and very a lot of them were very excited about the meal choices that they had. So I think it would definitely be comparable, if not better, because a lot of these meals that are made, they're actually scratch made meals.
Okay, thank you.
Rob?
I have none. Thank you.
Scott?
Yeah, hey Sue, just a quick question. I I think I heard Eva say that this is part of a, you know, a five year cycle and all of us are aware that there were some shortcomings with with Chartwells. And then Dr. Law and Eva decided to go out to bid. I'm just curious, I can't remember if we did we discuss this at board meetings in and around that time period?
So we discussed in April, oh, sorry, in April, May, June, and October, we had discussions about Chartwells and their admin review, me not paying their invoices due to the admin review and our final. So they had to come out and do three different times to clear us of the final review for the admin review. And I want to say in the October meeting, if I'm not mistaken, it was stated and it could have been previous board members. I'm not sure who who made the comment. But it was recommended that we go out to bid. And I'm not sure if that was an official discussion through the board, but that was what I had heard come out of. I'm not even sure if it was Amy's Amy who had stated that at that time when she was board chair.
Yeah, I'm absolutely aware that that there were the challenges with Chartwells. I was just asking if if we had. I just don't remember it getting to the point where we knew we were going out to bid. And that's why I think a lot of us were surprised when we talked about this at the last meeting. All right, that's all I've got.
Stephanie?
No, I'm all set.
Vinnie?
Just a question on the surplus generated. What was our? Do we have a profitability with Chartwells?
Last year we did. This year it doesn't look like we're going to.
And and going forward in their contract, they're guaranteeing us a $48,000 profit.
Correct.
Plus the $15,000 in equipment.
The $15,000 in equipment, I don't want people to get confused. That's basically an allowance. They'll purchase us for it, but we have to pay them back.
Okay.
So Chartwells actually in the past has purchased our cafeteria tables and we're still paying them back the $600 or whatever the payment is. But that was pre my time.
So that's that's kind of different from what they put on their proposal or in their in their marketing sheet that they're going to invest up to $15,000 in equipment.
Correct, but that that comes from the RFP language that is developed at the USDA and and Andy Paul has influence on how that wording is. So that wording actually comes from that language.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay, so let's take a vote.
Sue, can I ask one more question? It's Joe, please. What's what's the term on this Eva? How many years?
Again, it'll be five years from the year that we sign, but it's renewable annually. So if we're not happy with their performance either, we go out to bid again.
One of the comments that I read on on community forum was not enter to long term commitments. So even though it's five years, what's the significance of having it five years versus a three year if it's an annual contract?
A very good question. So when when companies have to come out to develop the the bid specifications to us, it does cost them money to do this. The longer that we do the contract for the more the more return we get, I guess is the best way to explain that. So they have they they can feel more comfortable in giving us better pricing for it as opposed to doing a short term contract that may not be renewed. But even though it's a five year contract, they're renewable. You have to renew annually. So it's not that I'm giving them five years. I'm giving them a five year reprieve from having to bid annually.
Thanks.
Okay, so let's take a vote. David, what's your vote?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Judy?
No.
Kathleen?
Aye, aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
So yes.
Thank you very much.
So nine yeses, one no. All right, moving on to nine point three. Pat, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. I am going to share my screen with you right now. And as you are looking at the presentation, it's very repetitive to what was in the public meeting. So I am going to go through the very beginning parts quickly because it'll get to the meat of where I think the discussion will be for tonight, which is around what are we doing with the budget? So again, we're focused on our vision, mission, and theory of action. The current proposed budget that we have out for our operating budget is a 1.22% increase. The RAM capital budget is at $448,232,000, which is an actual decrease of 13%. That's what it would look like for the levies. Here's the combined 0.97% for the overall budget and the three towns, the money that is the overage above the 1% that would be paid out to the three town, not paid out, taken off of the levy for the three towns for 2021. And in looking at the public comments overall and the executive seven I that executive boarder seven I that was proposed by and passed by the governor dictating this process. We've read the Board of Finance Chairperson's statement for Marlboro, the weekly updates I've been providing with the board, the public comments. As a reminder on the public comments that people could comment more than once. And so again, not knowing how many people commented repeated times versus individual times, but the overall comments were on pay for participation, the use of the surplus funds, the concern about the impact of the COVID-19, reconsidering and looking at our budget expenditures for fields and athletics and focusing on academics. Pay for participation did come up quite a bit. It is something that just needs to be shared with you that if we did take a look at wanting to bring pay for participation back, but at a lower amount, we could add it back at $185,000 for an athletic athlete for the year. There would be a single cost per athlete. And the estimated revenue that we would bring in if we redid that with a 185 for athletes and $40 for clubs would be an approximate anticipated revenue of $100,000. Suggestions for getting the budget to zero. This has been something that I have understood the board very recently has been talking about. So I am looking at what does that what could that look like from my perspective?
Pat, your your presentation is not moving.
It's not?
No.
Oh, hold on, let me take a look.
What page do what page do you see, Joe? Because I
it's moving on my screen.
I only see region eight, 2021. That's the first page.
I see page two. Suggestions to get a zero budget?
Yeah, that's what I see too, Joe. So you want to reconnect and we'll wait?
That's all right. I'm good. I I got the budget here anyway. So I just thought it was maybe a fault. But go ahead.
So in order to get to a bud budget increase for the overall budget of a zero, you would need to still cut $291,980. A suggestion that I have, and this is for a big part of the, I'm sure, conversations that are going to be happening is sorry, to we could pay out of the 1920 budget, out of this year's budget, we could pay $100,009 in sick and severance that is in the 2021 budget. That would be paying for Dr. Saminsky for 2021 as well as teachers that have the sick and severance payout that we've been talking about that were part of that contract agreement prior that is no longer part of the contracts. That is all budgeted right now for 2021 at $100,000, at $100,009. And we could pay that out of this year's budget. We also have leases for music equipment, the truck and the copier, which total $111,924. We could also take them out of the 2021 budget and pay them out of this year's 1920 budget. And then we could cut $80,047 from the 2021 capital budget, which would mean we would remove the flooring, which would be the ramps and the rugs, the architectural design, and 20, and $22,197 from the baseball project or some other project. In addition, looking down the road at future budgets, one of the things that I had said we need to address is $30,000 in IT switches. We could pay for that right now out of the current 1920 budget. We could also right now out of the current 1920 budget, pay off the the final year of 2021, 21, 22 for Dr. Saminsky's payout and the truck payout could also all get paid right now out of the 1920 budget and take those off of budget calculations that would be in in another year from now. And looking at the DOT update and what has been talked about already, we have the 102,867 that is over. I've talked with Andy today. Somehow we need to provide Bill Brandt at the DOT. We need to provide him with information around how we are going to address the Jackie, could you could you mute your? Let me just hold on one second. Thank you. Sorry. We need to find a way to be able to explain to DOT how we are going to address the 102,000 that is not covered right now. And they will not approve this project going forward and us signing the contract with BB and Sons for this contract, for the contractor for this project until we can provide to DOT how we're covering the 102,000 that's over. The other issue as brought up is that there is no contingency built into this project. So one of the suggestions I also have for the board to consider is the reallocation of the 304,959 of surplus funds that we can roll over that 1% for going to the DOT overage of 102,86708, 100,000 in DOT contingency that again, if we don't need all of that at the end of the project, that can be reallocated to another project. But for right now, not knowing, it would be better for this short term project to make sure that we have that covered. And then 102,092.8 to again, offset the levy for the three town budgets. That is the information that I want to share with the board right now around possibilities for the surplus funds and for the current 1920 budget. And I turn that now over to you for discussion.
So
you're getting an echo? I don't see. Oh, yeah, I will. I'll mute myself.
Okay.
I don't know that.
Okay, so David, we'll start with you.
What did you? What is it that you want me to?
Do you have any questions, comments, any any suggestions? We're talking about the budget here now.
Okay, have you, Pat, have you calculated what it would be to reduce some of the capital items, some of the other larger capital items? What that would do?
So trying to understand your question. Here are the capital projects on the screen. What I I I have not, I I've removed the ones that I'm saying are the the ramps, the carpet, the carpet, and the some from the the baseball field. That's my recommendation.
Well, how how would how would you be able to remove $80,000 from the baseball field?
I do think that we could address the divot problem in a different way other than removing the entire outfield for the 105,000, $150,000. Again, it's not fixing it long term fully, but I think that we could still fix the the problem.
And if I could just interject for one second, it wasn't 80,000 from the from the baseball field. It was only 22,000 from the baseball field.
Right. Right. The flooring, the architectural design in 22, I didn't put my here.
So what would what would what do you think the cost would be to fix the outfield, you know, to fill and reseed or whatever? I mean, God, with with, you know, it doesn't look like we're going to be going back to school. I mean, if we if we reseed, if we filled and reseeded now, you could almost have it ready for the fall when we come back.
I know that Rich Clarko and Michael Schleicher had conversations around other suggestions that Rich Clarko had talked about. I would have to get any final information from Michael Schleicher. I'm not sure if he ever received anything from Rich Clarko to finalize those suggestions and costs, but I can find out between now and Wednesday and get back to you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Jessica?
Might unmute. For me, it's more, there's definitely some questions, but I'm going to let some other people go right now. But for me, it's more the issue of the DOT project just kind of coming to everyone's attention now. So it's really, I think, important for us to take a breath and kind of refocus our attention to some of that, you know, again, this is very unprecedented that we're having to make this decision for a budget without people being able to vote. And to have something of this size, of this amount to come to us tonight, I think we need to take our time to really work through this to make sure we're making good decisions for that. So I'm sure I'll have some more questions as we go through some of this.
Joe?
Okay, thanks, Sue. Well, first, I think since we have Mr. Tierney on the phone, I think it's prudent that we listen to he what. I think it's, it's prudent that we listen to he, what, what, again, where, where we're headed. Um, this is, again, I, I've said it earlier in public comment. This is a state DOT project. Uh, we've been delayed for two years from, for many reasons. I've talked to many people about, uh, you know, Bruce Olmstead, who works for DOT that, uh, I also talked to Senator Osteen today about the DOT and seeing what, what she can do. Um, she wanted me to convey that she was going to talk to the governor, uh, about this. Um, but the timing of it is, is not very good right now that we're just getting, uh, made aware of it today. Uh, you know, they're not in session. So, you know, asking the taxpayers to fund $200,000. Um, and again, I don't know why this wasn't on our radar before. Uh, I'm on the DOT committee. Um, I did not know of 162,000 dollars, uh, contingency. Now, it's not that contingency, it's the inspections. So I think, you know, Mr. Tierney is vital in talking to us as a board before we go making any further decisions on this because this is a lot of money and nobody was expecting this. The second thing I'd like to just say is that I proposed a, you know, um, some of us on, on the board individually worked, you know, pretty tirelessly to get the budget to a zero. And I think we came up with that budget until today. Um, you know, with this, uh, sort of a bombshell. Um, so I, I, I want to talk about that proposal as well, but I, I would like to give this time to Mr. Tierney to talk a little bit more in depth for the Board of Finance and selectmen that are on the call that they understand the severity of this, uh, severity. And, and, and that way we can, it'll help some of the board members make a, a better decision of what we're going to do and where we're going to, uh, find the funds to, uh, support it. So thank you for that. And I do have more questions as well later.
So Andy, are you on the line still? Joe, I'm not quite sure Andy's still on the line.
Is he, is he still dialed in? Anybody, does Pat see that?
I don't know. We only see telephone numbers, um, and I believe he was a telephone number. I don't know his last.
I just texted him, let me. He, oh, seven is his last one. It looks like he's still on. He says he's still on.
Okay. Would he be able to come off of mute and maybe address some of Joe's concerns?
I'm asking him, can you unmute? Hold on. Andy, try start. Andy, try star six, please to unmute your phone because you're still muted on my screen.
There you go.
Okay, there you go. I apologize, I had to leave the call for a minute and I came back, so I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Andy.
Okay, so I understand the, um, the lateness of DOT. What I want everybody to understand is we put the project out to bid and as soon as we got the quotes or the bids, we sent the information to DOT. Tom Fenton, our consulting engineer from Nathan L. Jacobson and myself, sent him, uh, an email to, uh, the person at the state that's handling this project. And we immediately shared our concerns. And the response back we got from DOT was not to get ahead of ourselves. So unfortunately, we just got our responses today. So this doesn't really benefit Keber in any way, other than the actual Ram campus. Because we're still going to move forward with our other project and we have funds available for that construction. The only thing that I can say, and I agree with Joe. I mean, at no point in time were we supposed to put any burden on any of the taxpayers for the district. But with that being said, you have to look at the other side of the equation is we're getting a million dollars from the state to put into this project. And if we don't accept it and do it, that's going to go away to somebody else. It's, it's a, it's a tough decision to make. Uh, I'm not telling you which way to go. But I think the shortfall right now is a clear 102,000 due to the design changes. And then, uh, there's 162,000 in proposed inspection fees from the engineering contractor that can be negotiated down. So I don't think it's a clear 102,000, but Pat's statements are correct. If we do not demonstrate to DOT how we plan to pay for the whole project, the PAL agreement won't be signed. Um, so they would want to know two things. One, how we plan to pay for the total project for the 102, or 102,000 dollar shortfall. And two, they would want to know what we negotiated with Loops for a final, um, project inspection fee. And only then they would add those into that PAL agreement that the state uses and send it out for approval. So that's the only information that I can give you. Um, Joe's correct, we never planned on this project having to cost any of the district people any money. We had two add alternates that we took out. This is just the base bid for the project. So I put it back into the district's lap on the, um, importance of the staff and the students. I know this has taken a few years, but there was a lot of, uh, concern back then with the situation that happened. And they wanted to see this loop forward. Uh, this is just an update of where we are today. I know the timing's not great, but, um, it is what it is.
Does, any members of the board have any questions for Andy?
I do. Um, this is Stephanie. Um, the, the 162,000 for the inspection, that was the thing that, that popped up first this morning. Um, and now you're saying that that can be negotiated down, but later on. Um, is that going to, if we okay the 102,867 tonight, are we going to be saddled with the inspection fee later on down the road?
Well, how, great question. How that works is there's a total number, it's a 1.3, uh, 1,300,000 dollar grant. The state wants us to use as much money as that possible to pay down the project. The other project, the engineering is $129,000. That was originally, both projects were together when Senator Osteen went to the state and got us bonding line. What we did as a town is we went and got another grant to pay for the construction. But there's nothing I can do about the design work that's tied in. So that number can't change and we're willing to pay for that. Any addition to that, the 129 has to come out of the project. That leaves about a million one, I don't have my numbers in front of me, but a million plus for the total amount of the project. And the state wants to make sure we use as much money of the grant that we tend to pay for that. So right now it's a clear shortfall of 102,000. The, um, 162,000 for the inspection of the project construction was, uh, estimated by Loops and submitted, but it hasn't been approved and it would need to be approved by the DOT. And without giving away too many, um, inside, you know, bids, they put a couple of weeks of pre-construction and a couple of weeks or more of post-construction where we think we can trim those types of inspections down if no work's going on either prior to or after the fact. I think the engineering firm tried to meet a percentage of the project just to get the numbers into DOT. I clearly believe that can be lowered down. So the 102,000 may be less, but I can't say how much until we negotiate it.
Not the 102, Andy, the 160 you're talking about.
You're right, the 162 was proposed, but we're $102,000 over budget. With that 162 is included, and that's the number that gives us the overage. You know, I don't want to speculate how much I think we can reduce that, but as Pat stated, it's kind of hard for everybody to follow along this late game. But, um, we would have to negotiate immediate with Loops to reduce that number. And then we would have to supply that number to the state and they would have to agree to that in that PAL agreement in order to move forward. So maybe in summary, what I'm trying to say is it looks like we have $102,000 shortfall right now, but if we negotiate, I'm just throwing a number out there, don't, don't hold me to this. Say we get it down $40,000 and you guys approve 102. There's $40,000 you now have for a contingency you didn't have anymore.
All right, this is Judy. Are we expected to vote on this tonight?
That's between you and the board, I think. And, and you guys can correct me more. I think you're looking to fund this out of surplus monies out of the existing budget, not put it into the new budget, but I think that offsets what you're trying to reduce your budget now with those monies. So that's up to you guys.
The intention was to vote on this as soon as possible, whether it's tonight or Wednesday. Because, um, again, until we have an answer as to what we can tell the DOT, we cannot move forward with this project. And the concern is every day that we're not moving forward with this, we're not on the construction schedule with this company. Whereas, so, um, time is of the essence on this, but it could be tonight or Wednesday.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, this is Judy. I'm extremely uncomfortable voting on this tonight. Um, because there are too many unknowns. Don't quote me, I'm not certain. And I appreciate that rather than being given misinformation. But I too take this, um, very seriously that this won't go to a town vote because many years I've said, let the people decide. And that won't happen this year. So I, I feel like we really need more information.
And what information would you want, Judy? Is there something specific that you would like, um, to make sure that we have by Wednesday?
Well, Andy said that, and I don't know what this means, Pat. Andy said some of us are coming, of something such as we're coming late to it. So I guess as complete of a package and story because my understanding was not that we were going to pay for this, but it's Department of Transportation, which is a state, um, state government, that's the state of Connecticut, and that it was going to be funded that way. So it's last minute, you know, people are saying they're hurting. Um, and there's COVID clearly. And I would prefer not to use our surplus money this way. So I, I would really have to be convinced, I guess, as to why this is advisable and really how it benefits all three towns, going back to, um, one of the Marlboro persons, what? As one of the Marlboro selects been asked.
Okay. Thank you for, thank you for explaining that, Judy.
Yes.
Does anybody, any other board members have questions for Andy? All right, so.
Sue, Sue, I have, I, I think, just Joe here. Sue, or Andy, can you also share with, um, with the, the board that the process with the awarded vendor? Because how that works with, um, with the, with the PAL agreement and where we're at with that?
I was on, I was on mute, can you hear me?
Yes, so Andy, I, I asked a question to, can you share with the group, the, the board, uh, how the, how the, we have, we have an awarded vendor for BB and Son. How does that work? Can you inform the board so they can make some better, uh, decisions here on, on, you know, how the process works? Because we, we haven't funded, PAL's not releasing any money from the state. They haven't really officially released, uh, the vendor or awarded the, the job to the vendor. So can you just walk through that, please?
Um, I'll do my best. You kind of got me on the spot. So Joe's, Joe's correct, we, we can't move forward with this project. We can't award it to the low bidder who's the most qualified bidder. I think the state agrees that they're qualified. But all steps of the PAL agreement would have to be met before we could even award it, which makes sense. So with that being said, um, they want to know how we're going to pay for the project, how we're going to pay for the inspection and how we're going to pay if there is any contingency. So we'd have to spell that out and the information that we give them. And that includes negotiating the inspection fee, the final amount. They would add all that information into the PAL agreement and then finalize it and send it to us for approval. So this, just like I said, this project is clearly for the Ram campus other than $129,000 for the design out on 16 and 316, which was included in the study for the Ram, um, traffic situation problem. Uh, it's clearly to benefit Ram in both areas. It's not anything that I think Huber's going to benefit by. I think it's mostly for the school district itself, but that'll remain to be seen with the people involved.
Andy, this is Jessica. So the, the $162,000 for the inspection fees, is that for both of those pieces of the project?
No, that is just for the Ram project.
And when, when the bid, when the bid is done and it comes back, um, I'm just trying to understand the process because that's kind of new to me. Were the, were the totals for the inspection included in that bid? Is this just something that we're seeing, well, now this is a, a certain amount over? It's 162 over because of this? Or was that in the initial, um, bid that they, that they came back with?
It, it wasn't something that they bid with the project. It's a cost analysis that Luke submitted to manage the project. So their number was submitted to DOT and that's the number that it was. And that's actually what, uh, a portion of is driving the overage because we feel that's a little bit high and that hasn't been negotiated.
So are they still the low bidder? Um, when you look at all the different bids that came in, when you include this, this other amount in it? I'm just surprised that, that that's not included when you make a bid that you know there's going to be inspection costs. It's, it's legally what you have to do. Why would that not have been included in the initial, um, bid that they put in?
So that's a great question. We're talking about two different entities. The low bidder, the low bidder is just the one that's going to do the construction. The inspection would, the inspection would be by the engineering firm that designed it. They're going to inspect that it's built to the, to their design and give a certificate back to the school that it was, it was, um, built to the actual, you know, they have to prove that it's an ASBIL, they have to supply that when it's done.
Okay.
Andy, Joe here, can I ask, can we, can we change the vendor on this? Can we go to a different engineering firm?
That's something I, that's something that I would have to ask and I do not have that answered tonight. My only response would be is if Luke's designed it, um, they would be the ones that, that would be making sure it was built to their design. That's not saying that we, we can't shift gears. I would have to check and get that information.
How, how much of this overage is due to the fact that it's two years late? I thought this was supposed to go into play like two or three years ago when we did the, um, when we did the windows. And there was one reason or another why it got delayed, but it sounded like it was something on our part.
Without me throwing any of the entities involved underneath the bus, on the bus. DOT review is what held it up the first time. And then we had changes made and they made it go through another whole review. So now that that's done, we're now just trying to satisfy the requirements of this PAL agreement. Which is another DOT hurdle. And this is where we are at this late a date. So that's about the best update I can give to that question.
So is it, is the reason why it's costing more is because when we initially applied for the grant was two, was several years ago? And now that there's been delays, um, are, are maybe our application was too low or we're working with different numbers?
Um, I'm not quite sure how to answer that. I can only tell you what I know is we've got a good contractor. And the bid was a good bid, the number he put in is actually lower than what the engineer listed to project that. Came in below their um, their speculated cost. So I think we, we did pretty good. It, it's just there was, and Joe was a part of this committee, I think Bob Shadow was too. There was additional engineering that was requested by the DOT. Um, that, that made Luke's cost more money. And then we had, of course, like any project, we had made some changes as a committee. Um, that sent it back a couple of times, but I, I, I don't know what else to say what drove the cost. There very would could be some inflation, but the number that came in from the bidder was lower than what the engineer said the project was worth. So I can leave you with that.
Thank you.
Sue, I, I submitted a, a spreadsheet to the board. I don't know if everybody got it and had a chance to look at it, but it, it shows the numbers in the breakout. And it's 204,106 is what we're looking at that we're short. It's uh, you know, it's, it's a, it's a, the numbers are all listed on the spreadsheet of what the bidder was, what the Luke's design was. Your construction inspection costs are and the DOT contingency, which is, you know, 10% of the, of the $985,000. That um, that the, the bidder has come in at. So if everybody got a chance to look at that, I know you can't probably answer a lot of questions or, you know, vote maybe tonight. But those are the numbers you should be looking at.
Okay. Any other questions for Andy while he's on the phone?
Uh, Sue, last one. I'm sorry, Joe here. Andy, what, when, what's the timing of this as far as um, negotiating? Who's going to set the negotiations, number one? And, and number two, what is the schedule going to look like? Who's going to take stuff out of the schedule to get the negotiations to go downward, to get off this 162,000? What's the timing of that?
I was on mute again. Mike, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, that would be between the committee, the facilities committee or the people that are on this DOT committee. We would make a suggestion through Tom Fenton, our engineer. And he would give a rationale of what the reduction should be and why. And if the committee felt appropriate with that, we would supply that to Luke's for comment. And if Luke was in agreement, then we could send that to the gentleman at DOT and hopefully um, finalize the PAL agreement. So until that gets done, I really can't give you another forecast or a schedule. I'm hoping that we can do that in the next, I don't know, three or four weeks at the latest, if not sooner, of course.
And just so everybody knows, Andy, you have to be the one to give approval to the state or assurance to the state that we are going to meet these financial obligations. Is that correct?
Yes. What, what I'm, what I'm, what I'm doing is I'm facilitating the grant funds. Because as I stated earlier in the meeting or the other meeting, they only release it to municipalities. And because Ram is within Hebron, Hebron's boundaries, that's the way it had to happen. But anything I do would be approved by the superintendent of schools and the facilities committee. And if not, in this case, the whole board because it affects your budget.
Thanks.
Okay. So Joe, we're still on you for questions for the budget. Did you want to um, finish your turn?
No, I spoke. I'm, I'll come back on the budget. I, I, um, I think we have a lot to discuss. I mean, that works 9:30. So I'll let some other people talk in.
Okay. So Judy, you're up next. Kathleen? Rob?
Sue, are you looking for questions or more comments?
I'm just looking to see what steps we want to take on the budget.
Okay. Uh, one of my comments would be about the um, flooring that Dr. Law wants to remove. Uh, to me, that's a safety issue. So I would rather see the flooring in there and uh, remove the media furniture. Because if you add up all the um, totals that Dr. Law wants to use surplus money for, there's still about 176,000 left in there. Based on what Ava said today, we have 450. So in my opinion, she could use that um, for the furniture. And uh, again, I, I, I would rather see the flooring in there myself. That's all.
Okay. Scott?
Hey Sue and everyone. Um, so uh, I, I had a question before and it, and it didn't get answered. But I just, I'm, I'm confused about how we're having a, a discussion about contingency in a project that's been underway for, for so many years now. But we've already talked about that a lot. So I'll just leave that as a, as a comment. Not necessarily in order, but because Rob just brought it up. The, the flooring issue for those ramps and so forth, I, I just want us to, everybody needs to be cognizant and put a pin in that. Because when it was proposed to the board many, many months ago, it was proposed as a safety issue, the, the ramps and the flooring. And uh, I, I just, I don't know how that could have changed if it, if it's, if it's not no longer a safety issue. Going through the notes of having listened to Mr. Tierney and, and Joe talk about the DOT project. Everyone needs to keep in mind that again, we're all kind of by the seat of our pants to an extent that we shouldn't be right now. But we're talking about over 200, or approximately, I should say, up to $206,000 worth of a change to that budget. Which is a massive, if you look at the, you know, original estimates of the budget and understanding that we had some, the state, doing what the state does and slowing things down. That, that, that's a huge, um, it's a huge number. And, and many of us just found out about it, if not a few hours ago now during the presentation, along with the public and folks that are on the call with us. I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit disappointed that after about a month uh, into the survey or into, into the period here with the crisis that we haven't had uh, haven't had some of this uh, budget workshop-like kind of meeting that we would have at this point. And I think that's what's making an already difficult, the budgets are always difficult. We all know, know that. You layer the challenges to the towns and the COVID situation into it and it makes it exponentially more so difficult. And, and just for context, for those that are either new to the board or folks that are kind enough to be staying along with us. What we're, what we looked at just now, what we were presented with is that's not a product of what the board has looked at. There's some initial start points in there that we talked about over the past months. But that's, that's a new, a new budget with a lot of new recommendations that some of us, if we were working up until late, later this afternoon, just saw for the first time as they were presented. And normally we have two, three, four really long sessions where we work these out and have really deep discussions on those. So in the absence of not having board meetings now for about a month, many of the board members that are on the call right now have tried to find solutions with individual meetings and texts and have tried to keep up with this to the, to the best extent that we had. I don't know if everybody has seen it or not. I think Joe shared it with everybody who's on the board. But there was a solution that in a very um, piecemeal sort of way that got us to a uh, fraction of a percentage. Don't quote, I don't know what the number is, but a fraction of a, less than a fraction of a percentage, year-over-year increase, which essentially was less than $10,000 year-over-year budget increase. And I would like to recommend that whenever we get to that point, that Joe or whoever can, has the capability, share uh, that plan so that that can also be on the table. Uh, we've heard a lot from the public and we've heard a lot from public officials from several of the towns that they wanted us to get close. And we were, I, I, I think less than $10,000 of an increase on a 30-plus million dollar budget is as close to a 0% as you can probably get. And um, last but not least, just a small comment on, on the, the, the story that keeps on giving with pay-to-play. We, we had some slides up a little bit earlier that said there were positive and negative comments. I'll say again, as I said, uh, during the public portion of the comments, these are rough numbers. And as Dr. Law accurately noted, there were folks who clearly 30 seconds apart made a comment and then made the same exact comment. But with that having been said, I read through all 94 of the comments and there were roughly 15 in favor of reinstating or keeping pay-to-play. And there were 33 comments that were against pay-to-play. So those are, you can pull up the spreadsheet right now and take a look at it. But that's, and I'm sure at some point those are going to become public. So there's a difference between there's positive and negative comments. And I mean, that, that's an overwhelming majority of more than double, uh, not in favor of keeping pay-to-play. For reasons including, I'm a single parent. Um, I'm a, I'm a, a family that uh, the, the, the student itself had to make choices and was not able to play a second sport because they were working and were forced to pay for their own pay-to-play. And uh, so that's uh, I think I'll, I'll stop there for now.
Hi Stephanie?
Um, yeah, to kind of piggyback on the um, pay-to-play, I think um, it's, it's gone far beyond um, whether people make, you know, our middle class or upper middle class at this point. We're talking about employed and unemployed. And that, that's, that's such a big disparity that, that I don't want to see sports become something for the privileged. And something for the people who, who have jobs. At this point, um, I think that um, we're a public school and we need to serve all of our students equally. And I think that, that this is a time to keep it out of the picture so we can serve our students. Um, if we have some kind of big athletic project down the road where, you know, we could, we could maybe look at modifying it. But I think in this um, state that we're in right now, um, we need to keep it out of the picture. I do have a question though, for the materials that we got tonight. You state about, you know, it stated the 180, $85 would um, result in $100,000. Is that part of the proposal that, that Pat has put forth tonight? Or is that just a suggestion? Um, is that, where are we with that in, in these materials that Pat passed out tonight?
It is not in any of the materials. It's just a suggestion.
It's just a suggestion. Okay. Um, I think I'd like to um, see if we could dive into capital a little bit more. So we can reduce that, that 102,000 dollars. Um, and um, you know, kind of preserve that surplus a little bit. See if we can get it down a little bit more. I really would like to still shoot for the zero or as close to zero as possible, even though we're in this situation with the state and the DOT project. Um, and I think if we put our heads together, um, we can do it, but time is the problem. And um, I think if we had had some budget um, meetings like Scott had mentioned previously and ironed out some of these other issues, um, you know, getting hit by this maybe wouldn't be quite as painful. But I think uh, we're going to have to move fast here and um, and really um, put everything into it. That's it.
Okay. Vinnie?
Thanks Sue. Um, you know, again, I'm going to echo some of my words before, you know, I think the, the administration, the superintendent, the business manager have done a great job controlling costs over these past couple of years. However, it doesn't negate the issue that there was a problem with the budget at one point. And it was a very easy unanimous vote to put it on the parents of Ram students to make up the difference in the budget. And now everybody's asking for their surplus money back. Uh, and I just don't understand. I don't understand why uh, the relief isn't there for the parents that have, that have been paying in. And again, we're in a good position. We've been in a budget surplus for the last three years. I, you know, I, I don't understand where, you know, how come we're lacking the grace i- in this? And again, I think the, the 102,000, I don't want to see, I don't want to see us get killed on, you know, wasting money on the DOT project. Uh, I think it's, you know, it's unfortunate that it's come up. You know, again, it, it seems like it's a pattern here with, with big projects. But um, you know, you could take that money from uh, some of the capital and some of the surplus and you could make it happen. And again, we're going to have a $100,000 contingency, which you may not use, which will, which will carry over, you know, to next year. Uh, speaking of next year, um, again, with these projected decreases in enrollment, um, I would like to see us put a hiring freeze on for, for any positions that are vacated. So that uh, before any positions are, are filled, that it comes before the board. You know, I think next year is, is, you know, people are talking about a big question mark on, on next year and, and where the budget is and where ECS is. So I, I would like to see that. I think that would be a prudent step by the board. Um, before we replace uh, any positions uh, in terms of uh, staffing uh, for, you know, students regarding students and teachers. And again, Marlborough's, Marlborough's capital budget is 1.1 million dollars. Hebron's capital budget is 678,000. Both those towns have uh, an increase in operating budgets. You know, it's just one of those things where, you know, we're going to get to zero. I agree with some of Pat's moves. I, I think we can get to zero. And then you're talking about giving back 102 and 106,000. So now you're, now you're giving back 208,000 on top of a zero budget, which puts us, puts us well into the negative. Uh, and that, and that is a plan that includes no pay-to-play. So I would agree with, with that move and uh, everybody gets a break and, and the towns do get uh, some money back from this surplus. Thanks.
Okay. Um, I hope I didn't skip Judy or Kathleen, but I, I, I hope I didn't skip them.
No, you didn't skip me. My, my button didn't work again. Sorry.
Oh, okay. So did you want to go before I went Kathleen?
No, it's, it's, you can go. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, just a couple of follow-up. The, the budget workshop sessions, I'm very confused on what some of the board members are requesting there. We had board workshop sessions throughout the month of February. We are doing nothing different than what we have done in the past with meetings. So I'm confused on what, what you're looking for or asking. We're following the same path that we followed um, in past years. The, the DOT project, you know, it was, that, that money popped up, that issue popped up today. So whether we had additional meetings in February or March, that issue would have popped up today regardless, I believe. And uh, the surplus, I, I, I agree. I read all of those comments as well online. I've listened to a lot of feedback from my town in Marlborough. And I 100% agree that any surplus money that we can use to offset the budget is a smart move. And uh, my position hasn't changed from the beginning, pay-to-play to eliminate it all. I, I don't, I do not support that and that hasn't changed. But since everyone's given their feedback on that, I decided to give my feedback again just so you all know my position and where I stand with pay-to-play as well. Um, at this point, I really feel like right now, I think we just, and I don't know how Pat feels about this, but you know, Wednesday was supposed to, we come back and see a revised number with all of the suggestions. So at this point, in order to, you know, add things, take things out, take some of Pat's suggestions, we need to start making motions. And then Pat and Eva and team will come up with the revised number and provide that back to us on Wednesday for that meeting that we're having on Wednesday. And Kathleen, actually, you couldn't get off your mute, so I didn't know if you had any comments to state?
No, nothing. I don't think that's already been said. You know, definitely I agree. I was one of those people who spent, you know, quite a bit of time trying to collect information individually and see, you know, what would be the best thing to do. There's been a lot of conversations about zero budget. I think for the people that I spoke to individually, you know, we did a pretty good job of getting input and trying to see what we could do to support all three towns. Definitely COVID and the impact to the communities was a discussion in how to support people. We don't want to hurt anybody, but there's almost no way to not move forward without having some increase, but I think the increase that we looked at is so tiny. I'm hoping that we can stay low. I'm disappointed that we're finding out about the DOT right now. And I'm disappointed that most of our focus continues to be on pay-to-play. That's just too bad. Our budget is huge. It has many things in it. And I was kind of hoping we could get beyond that.
So Pat, anything else to add? And am I correct in stating we need to start making motions now?
We do. Just a couple of things just to be clear on. Throughout the entire budget process, I have stated that we have needed to take money to set aside for the DOT contingency and have looked at numbers around $100,000 to $150,000. And that was something that has been talked about since day one, knowing that that project was coming. So although we do have the issue with the $102 over, there's always been a thought in the planning process of using the 1819 surplus funds to use some of them to address the DOT project. And I wanted to be clear on that. I was not aware until recently, no one had directed me to come in with anything related to a zero budget and only had heard that there had been conversations about that, which is why you're seeing tonight just a slide around some suggestions around if the board wanted to get to a zero, what my suggestions would be, since that was not something that was part of any budget discussion. So that's the reason why it is here now and is here something for you to be looking at and thinking about and considering. We do need to, at this point, start to take a look at whatever thoughts the board has and whatever you want to consider from what I've shared to make motions because Eva and I will need to then take all of that information and provide you with different scenarios to be able to review on Wednesday night and vote on.
Sue's joke. What is our timing looking like as far as the, with COVID now? Can we extend on any of our decisions here? Because it's 10 o'clock. And, you know, I don't think a lot of people are comfortable making this decision tonight. And I would like to go through my budget that I presented to all of you at some point. So when I get that opportunity before we start making motions, I'd like to at least have the public here, what we, you know, some of the board members did over the weekend to try and get to a, to zero, which we did get to zero before the bombshell of 162 dropped in our lap this morning. And Pat, I will also just say, we did talk about contingency on the DOT project. However, you know, after today realizing what the magnitude of this was and not fully, you know, because I was not on the DOT committee before until we lost some of the other members, but having the taxpayers thinking about this, having the taxpayers pay for a DOT project just resonated with me today. It's like, why are we doing that? I understand, you know, I did some talking today with, like I said, Senator Osteen. I talked to our former colleague Bruce Olmstead who works for the DOT, asking him for his recommendation, because quite frankly, I would like to pull the plug on, I was going to pull the plug on this today because I personally don't feel like it's in the best interest of the taxpayers. But then talking and gathering the information from Bruce and what you said earlier, we got $1 million, or someone said it, we got $1.1 million for this tragedy to try and redesign our campus. That money will go back to somebody else if we don't do something. But here we are with a gun to our head to try and make these decisions is really stretching it at this hour. And I would just like to know, I think a lot of people on the board would like to know, why do we have to do this till Wednesday? I understand other boards, Marlborough and other people, Hebron, I went to listen to their virtual meeting. They're waiting on our decision, but this is a very, very tricky one at best. And I think everybody is basically saying the same thing. This is, so I just want to know what are our options as far as timing? That's my first question. And then I would like, Sue, when you would like me to present my budget so everybody can at least have it here, what was, what we did. I appreciate that.
I agree with Joe.
Would you like me to go ahead with my?
What did David say? I thought David just said something.
Yeah, I did. I agree with Joe. I think it's like we're rushing. You know, at 10 o'clock at night, I don't want to start making motions and push things.
Well, again, right now, you would only be making motions as to what you would like to see as options for the board to be able to review and vote on on Wednesday. You wouldn't be voting on a budget tonight. You're providing me with suggestions for Eva and I to go back and actually take the suggestions and run them through the numbers and make sure that they make sense. And then, you know, whether it's my stuff, Joe's stuff, everybody else's stuff, we need to run them so that we make sure that the numbers are correct. And then you'd vote on that on Wednesday. So only thing tonight is just voting on suggestions.
Does it have to be voted on Wednesday?
Can you say that again, Dave?
Does it have to be voted on Wednesday? Do we have more time?
Well, when Sue and I met with the other three town managers, of which definitely one of them is still on the phone, we talked about the timeframe because of the executive orders, because of the ability to be able to, the executive order talks about being able to push the timeframe for budgets 30 days and the impact on those timeframes on the other three towns because obviously Ram's budget is impactful to all three of those towns. We agreed with, working with Andover and with Marlborough in particular. Hebron was a little bit more flexible, that we would stick to this timeframe. Technically, we could extend the timeframe. If we do extend the timeframe, it is going to impact Marlborough and Andover. And I'm not sure what that then does to them and their budgets. And I don't know, it looks to me like Greg Lowry is still on the phone tonight. And I don't know if you'd like to hear from him what the impact could be since he and I and Sue had a very specific conversation about this. Greg, did you just unmute?
I did. I did. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I am intrigued at the concept of a zero budget. I'm slightly concerned about the method that is suggested. Although, you know, math is math, it seemed like there were three suggestions. Two of them required that current year surpluses be used to satisfy future year expenses. And the third one pushed a capital item out into the future. And I think what the taxpayers are looking for is a true reduction in expense. And I think in a budget conversation, that means a reduction in operating. And I don't think that the three items suggested touch a reduction in operating expenses.
So Greg, I think with the question we're looking to have answered right now, it is 10 o'clock. And I know we had a meeting a few weeks back with the town leaders and the Board of Finance chairs to come up with the timeline. If we don't meet that timeline, how will that impact Marlborough?
Well, we need to offer two weeks' public notice before the local Board of Finance approves its budget, which is dated, it's slated for May 13th. And so the plan in the letter that was read earlier was that the local Board of Finance will release its budget a week from, what is today? Is today Monday? A week from tonight. I'm sorry, a week from this morning. And so if you don't reach consensus on Wednesday, that would somewhat frustrate the ability of the local Board of Finance to discuss the town budget, of which the Ram budget is a major component, which is slated to occur Friday evening. And so I don't know how much more time you need, but the answer to that question would impact, I think, you know, what we could do. Eventually, we need to produce a budget for the town. I know that there are some towns that are playing chicken and not passing a budget. There is a legislative mechanism for that. You basically use your current year budget until you can pass a new one. The problem with that approach is that all of your cash gets consumed by salaries.
Yeah. I guess what I'm hearing from the board, and I don't have consensus, but I heard from a few folks, is it is 10 o'clock at nighttime and I don't think that the board is ready to really dig deeper into, you know, making motions tonight, adding, subtracting, and doing what we have to do, especially with this DOT amount popping up today, late today. So we may not be able to complete what we need to complete tonight in order for Pat to revise things to provide us back a figure for us to vote on on Wednesday. That's what I'm hearing right now.
Sue, can I give you, can I just quickly go through my budget, the ones that we did? So just so the people on the call can understand what we worked on.
Do you want to put it up on the screen or no?
I gave it to you and Pat. I don't know if you guys have it. I mean, I don't.
Let me.
But it's really quick. We reduced capital by $100,000. So we went from four something to 348, 362. We kept in the, again, I think Danny Larson had a comment earlier about how we prioritize things. And we had a very long list of projects, you know, based on an aging school. I know some people don't believe that 18 years is a long time, but if you have a house like mine, it's built in the same 2004. I'm replacing things now. But we repaired the EPIS. We kept in a $10,000. Do you want me to wait for Pat to put it up or?
I'm trying to find it, so hold on one second.
Just to touch on the big numbers, but you know, again, we reduced capital budget by $100,000. There were surplus funds of 304, 959. We thought pretty, I think, out of the box. We tried to bring down next year's budget with that concept in mind that we, you know, for many people that don't understand the deferred compensation, Dr. Saminsky, the prior superintendent was, I think it was five years, his compensation, his merit increases were deferred, which totaled about $82,000. That was not one of the, I know that the intent behind it the day was to, they thought they were helping, but in essence, it really put more of a hurting on record-keeping and also bringing it to the point where now we have to pay for it over a five-year period. So that, we tried to bring that out of the surplus money of 16, 572. Paying off the truck lease that we have for two years, 29, 740. DOT contingency, we agreed with Dr. Law and again, $110,000. The IT network, $30,000 for aging. If you go to the second one, Pat, if that's the first one, it brings it, capital. But thanks for doing that.
Oh, you wanted the capital one up?
Well, that's the second one, just kind of so the public can see what we did and how we applied the money, surplus and the money that was still going back to the towns in the form of a levy. But basically, the first slide here that you have up, I can talk about it. We got it down to $2,000 increase, which is that 00035%. Some of the board members didn't participate on this. We tried to do, you know, as best we could with talking, at least myself reaching out to individuals, some I couldn't get a hold of. But, and that's where we got down, that's the main number, to $2,000 increase over last year's budget. And the second page shows you how we got to those numbers, again, reducing capital by 100,000, putting in the upgrades for the switching that we need and then the field competition, repair drainage for the comp field for $45,000. And that brought it to $231,000. And we were still giving back to the town $73,607. So that was a, I think, a well-thought-out plan. Maybe not everybody agrees. But we were still giving money back. And I will just say this for the record. I've been one of the longest members on this board now. And prior to me coming on board, the three towns did, Ram did things very differently back then. They gave almost $2.8 million back to the towns in form of checks, not offsets. And with that mindset, people deferred maintenance. And I see this in, I see it going on in Andover. I see it going on in Marlborough. And I saw, it doesn't really go on too much in Hebron where I live, but because we firmly believe in having a strong CIP. So I thank our Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance for that. But this is where people get into trouble. When you defer maintenance and you defer your problems, it only magnifies three or four times down the range. So that being said, I said earlier, people should go up and look at how Ram looks. It's not a Penn State or any other major campus, but it is a beautiful, attracting facility that people come to live in these beautiful communities of Andover, Marlborough and Hebron to get people to come here. Because this is, the shortened gist of it is, they come here for the schools. They also come for the beautiful settings, but they're really coming here for this institution. And that's what we're trying to maintain and get back to an equal basis. We're trying, we still have a lot of things to do, folks. And there's a lot of money to be put out there. COVID was unexpected, but, and so was this DOT thing today. So we heard you and I think we came up with a really good plan to get us back there. I would make the recommendation tonight, Sue, that we take the time to end this meeting today. We could have a virtual meeting tomorrow if people were so inclined as a board. I don't know what the legal postings have to be now, since we're in COVID, but since it's critical for Mr. Lowry and I know the town of Hebron has their budget tomorrow night, I think we could get this done tomorrow collectively and figure out where we're going to find these funds. where we're going to find these funds, and, and come up with a unanimous decision to move forward with our plans to getting it to, to, to zero. And I think compromise will, we'll, we'll all have to do some compromising. So, I'll end it there. But thank you for, Pat, for putting that up.
You're welcome. Joe, just one thing on your, on the capital one. The payoff of the remaining truck lease, 14,870 times two, with the savings of 29, 572, we only had one year budgeted in this year's budget. Obviously, we didn't have both years budgeted. So, that's a saving, you're only saving 14,870 out of this year's budget. The other 14,870 would be at a next.
That's correct, Pat, and I, that's why I'd ask for the payoff, just to, again, I think we're going to be in this situation for the next couple of years. I think money's going to be tight next year with, you know, there's no sales tax coming in, people are home. Speaking with Senator Osteen, the casinos are closed, there's a lot of, there's no revenue coming in, and a big portion of that revenue from, is from the casinos goes to the education. So I, you know, I think we, we've, we've all talked about it individually, that next year is going to be tough. And I think we, we were just trying to get to a point where we're trying to get, get debt, reduce debt and get it off the books, so we won't have as, you know, a tough near next, uh, next year to, to try and come up with some of these things with leases. And I don't know what the payoff is, but I would imagine it's a couple of thousand dollars in interest, and I think at this point, you know, nickels and dimes are going to matter. That was just my, our suggestion, that's all.
Right. And I, right, yep, absolutely.
So, I, I think we need 24 hours to post, to meet legally, and I, I know we want to do things legal, so I'm not quite sure tomorrow would really be an option, Joe. But we have that meeting Wednesday already posted.
You could post Wednesday, and then if you wanted, if you wanted an additional meeting, we could post tomorrow, a Thursday meeting, or a Friday meeting, whatever the board wants, so that that's already posted, in case after Wednesday you still need a Thursday.
Yep. I, I have another board meeting Thursday, so I cannot do Thursday.
Can, can we legally take money from the current budget, as we're suggesting here?
The board can say, yes, we have the serp, we have the money in the budget right now, it's been appropriated, we're not using it for the same thing, so the board would have to approve those budget transfers. But obviously, we're having savings, as we've talked about in places like electricity and other things, where we will have that money available to be able to transfer to other line items.
So what, what do we want to do here as, as a board? Because if we're going to continue to talk about the budget, I don't have a problem with that, or are we going to meet again and finish talking about the budget at a later point?
Sue, I like the idea of keeping Wednesday's meeting and posting for Friday. We don't need to hold the meeting for Friday, but that way, if we needed it, it would be posted.
Well, we would need, if we're going to have a discussion Wednesday, we will need another meeting in two days after that, in order to allow the administration, Pat and Eva, to come up with a new figure, so then we could actually vote on it and pass the budget. So, we would just, what we're saying is, is Wednesday we would use as making suggestions, making motions to add, subtract, do what we needed to do. They would take it back, they need two days to come up with the, the figure, and then Friday, we would come back, join a meeting, a quick meeting hopefully, to just approve the budget with the new figure.
Thank, that makes, that's what I understood, thank you.
Yep, so the Friday meeting, if we, so the Friday meeting would need to happen, and then Wednesday, we use as, you know, a continuation of this discussion around the budget.
Right, thank you.
Okay. So, should I go down and see if everyone agrees with that approach? So, David had to leave. Jessica, do you agree with that approach?
Yes, I definitely do.
Uh, Joe?
Sorry, Sue, yes, I do.
Okay. Um, and, and actually, before I run down the list, can I, you know, we start at 6:30, and I, I don't know what everyone's situation's like right now, especially since we're all, you know, mainly working from home, but could we start earlier on Wednesday?
This is Judy, I could.
So let me just go down the list and say if you agree with the plan, and if you're okay with starting earlier, and what time would work for you? So Jessica, what, please, would you answer those two questions?
Yeah, no problem, yeah, that does work, and I, I mean, I could probably do as early as 4:30, 5 o'clock.
Uh, Joe?
Sorry, Sue, um, this is for Thursday?
No, Wednesday, the, the scheduled meeting on Wednesday.
I can do anytime, it's fine.
Okay, Judy, you, what time would you be able to?
You know, Sue, I have a meeting that night, so the earlier, the better probably for I, I just realized I have a conflicting meeting, I have a meeting at 7:00 PM. So Jessica said as early as 4:00 PM, that would work for me.
Okay, Kathleen?
The earliest I could probably do is 4:00. And I, and I, yep.
Okay, Rob?
I'm working this week, so the earliest I could probably do is 4:30.
Okay, Scott?
I can do 4:30 or 5:00 on Wednesday, and something that hasn't been mentioned, we, so, we're going to have a big meeting, it's going to be a tough meeting on Wednesday, and there's going to be a lot of math, there's going to be a lot of work required by Pat.
No, but that's not, but that's what I'm saying, is, is that math would not be done Wednesday. Wednesday, we would be.
Let me finish, let me finish my statement, I'll complete that. So, I don't know how, that's going to be a long meeting, so now we're into Thursday, Pat and Eva are trying to put together a packet. I, I don't know about everybody else, but I'm working during the day. Is there any reason, I just want to throw another option on the table for that quote-unquote "final" meeting and the vote, is there any reason we can't do that next Monday as opposed
The longer that it's put off, I think it's just the impact for the other towns, Marlboro and Andover and the DOT project, but I'm sure that can work.
My, 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 the only reason I'm asking is, we, we've had some challenges with not having time, you're going to put together a new packet, Pat, and it's going to be open, and it's going to have a lot of information, and I, I'd like to actually have time to read the information and digest the information.
Yep, understood, makes sense. Sue, just for your information on Wednesday, I have a governor's phone call from 5:00 to 6:00, so it makes it really hard for me to do anything before 6:00.
Can you ask the governor for a couple hundred thousand, Pat, when you have, when you're talking to him?
Not a problem. I talk to him every week.
So Stephanie?
I'm free anytime you decide.
Vinnie?
Uh, yeah, that's fine, it sounds like, you know, we should, we should have the superintendent there at 6:00, I can do 6:00, I can do 5:30 if you want to get started a little bit earlier. But, you know, I, I want to say, I don't, I don't think this, you know, we, there's several options on the table to get to zero, and there's, and there's several options on the table to, to lower the capital, and there's, there's another option to use current, you know, current surplus monies from this year's budget, and, and still give, still be at zero, and still give money back to the towns. So, I don't think it really should be that difficult as we're making it.
Okay, well, it, it's, it's 6:00, it has to be 6:00, right, Wednesday, 6:00 Wednesday, and then post for, it doesn't matter to me whether it's Friday or Monday, so I, you know, do we need to have a vote on if we're meeting Friday or Monday?
My thought, I like the idea of Monday for everyone to have time to really review this, and so.
I agree.
So why don't, so, well, why don't we ensure that everyone's available Monday, right?
Yep, Monday, April 27th.
Yeah, is anyone not available?
And what time? The governor doesn't talk on Mondays anymore.
Yeah, then maybe, let's say 5:00, you know, to, Scott, who's, who's still, you know, physically working, I guess, I want to respect everyone's time. Vinnie's saying 5:30.
I'm pulling up my schedule now, Sue, hold on a second, 5:30 will definitely be okay.
Yeah, 5:30 is okay for me, so I, I probably more than likely can be wrapped up at 5:30, so.
Okay.
So is everyone okay with 5:30? If you're not, can you let me know right now? Okay, so 5:30 on Monday.
And I'm changing to 6:00 PM on Wednesday. Got it.
Yeah, my concern is, is Judy's not going to be able to be there, right? Judy, right? I, I guess she'll, she'll be able to be there for an hour possibly.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, we need to move to public comments, or are we moving 9:00 to, dot, dot 4:00 also?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Move that.
Yep, okay, so, public comments. Is there any public comments? If there is, could type your name, or just speak up. Okay, no public comments. The executive session.
We do need to do executive session, it'll be quick, hopefully.
Okay, so, there's a separate number and a separate link for that, so we'll all have to drop this line and join the other link.
Are you asking the superintendent just to go into executive session with you?
Yeah, yes, I need a motion, if someone can make a motion to go into an executive session and have Pat join us.
Make a motion, we go into executive session, have Dr. Law join the session.
Seconded.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
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 Hi. Okay, all right, so we'll see you all over on the other link.